We are live.
Do we need to call this work session to order? Is that required?
Yes, please.
Call the work session to order at, what time is it? 6:02. Okay, council members. We'll get started. I think the mayor will be along shortly. But we have a few, this kind of housekeeping items that we can cover first. If I can get my phone working correctly. Okay. Okay, tonight for the work session, we're going to, we'll finish the fund, the overall fund reviews that we started last week. I think we ended with Fund 100 and then we will move on to the remaining funds. And then we will, for the remainder of the work session, we'll lay out the exceptional items that have been submitted either from council members or from staff and go over each one of those exceptional items today. Part of those exceptional items will be for anything that affects all funds. So if it affects multiple funds, then we treat those in all funds exceptional item. And then the remaining exceptional items are all in, I believe they're all in Fund 100, the general fund. We won't make any decisions on these exceptional items this evening, but we will. So we'll lay them out. We can discuss them this evening. And when we come back at the next work session, we will, at that time, have revenue projections available for you. And we'll also have available funds projections for you at that time so that we can make an educated decision on all of the exceptional items that we lay out today and then any other exceptional items that we have for the other funds that may get submitted between now and then. But I really don't think there will be other exceptional item for the other funds. But if there are, then we can address them at that time. So that's the agenda for today. The first thing I will go to is, is actually just a housekeeping item. If you'll look in the, if everyone is on the, the electronic budget packet that Ashley and Amber have done an awesome job in providing for us. There is a correction that I'll note in Fund 100, Department 40, that's PD. We realized that we still, we still had ACL expenditures budgeted for in this budget. And after we talked about that, we decided that's probably appropriate to take out. So we took that $30,000 appropriation out, which took the overall total budget request from 1,070,444 to 1,040,444. We had it noted as a 9% reduction in request year over year. It's now a 12% reduction year over year. So there's nothing for you to do on that. Just wanted to, since it is different from what we discussed last week or last month, I wanted to give that to you. And with that, we can now go ahead. I think last time we laid out all of Fund 100 and reviewed each of the departments under Fund 100. We will now move on to Fund 200, which is the water fund, and lay it out. If you'll, in your electronic budget packet, that would be tab four, I believe. Is that correct, Amber? It is correct. It's tab four. Amber, you're on mute if you were trying to talk. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Now you got me.
My bad.
No one could hear me.
I was, I was gonna share it to the screen.
Okay, that's great. So Fund 200, this is the water fund. We'll just go down the budget worksheet, budget action request worksheet that is found in tab two. A few of the highlights here. We have a slight increase in training and a slight increase in travel, 5125. Those are for David. He is excited to be on the job and has a few new certifications that I think, is that right, Amber? He has some water certifications that you would like to pursue.
Yes.
Couple of slight, slight increases in training and travel for him to accomplish those goals this year. We have a slight increase in tools and supplies and also a slight increase in 5171 equipment. Those are again, just David kind of doing a first blush assessment of his department as he takes the lead there and needed some increases in a few of the, yes, he has certain equipment and certain tools that he feels like would, would be important for him to have. So those are slight increases. Let's see, the rest of them are pretty mundane. Vehicle operations increase was based on year-over-year actuals. There is a significant increase. If you'll look down at 5219, utility billing collection. That's an increase of 72,000. That's a result of us making a move this year to bring that utility billing and collection in-house. We did have offsetting decreases, however, in the utility billing collection additional and the, and the project management and the engineering services for the cul-de-sacs. Those were all significant decreases which offset the increase for the utility billing collection. And although that is an increase in Funds 200 and expenditures, the utility billing collection should, should pay for itself. Is that, is that correct, Amber?
Right.
All right, good deal. Yes, we increased slightly, 5271, the rate consulting services. Amber, do you want to talk a little bit about our thought process behind the rate consulting services of allocating it in water this year and maybe wastewater next year? In the past, we've only budgeted this item when someone thought to bring it up. Kudos to Sarah. It's usually Sarah who thinks to bring it up. But we, we talked a little bit about maybe an alternating budget option here to, so that it's kind of on a standard cycle. Do you want to talk about that, Amber?
Right, I think the thought was that we would look at, we wanted to make sure we were on top of, you know, the annual expenses regularly and make sure that our, we didn't wait five years and then have an astronomical jump in, in rates because we weren't on top of it and watching it closely. And so we felt like staff probably has the time and energy to do one rate study per year and thought that we could alternate between water and wastewater. So this year we're looking at wastewater and then next year we would look at water.
Or opposite of that.
Oh yeah, sorry. Well, yeah, the upcoming, we're looking at wastewater currently.
Yes, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Yes, correct. So next year we'll look at water. So that's the highlights from Fund 200. I will note that the 5280 is the water purchased line item for 550,000. That is based on the five-year average. As you all recall, last year I think is when we moved to the, or no, two years ago, I think we, instead of throwing a dart at the dartboard, we started actually trying to take a rolling five-year average and using that to do our budgeting with. I don't think we have those new five-year averages updated yet, but this is, this is based on the best available data of the five-year average that we have. So as we get that finalized, the, the new five-year averages done before next time, we'll adjust that if needed. Amber, did I miss anything on this worksheet?
No.
Okay. So with that, we will move on to tab number five, which is street maintenance fund, 301. This is pretty straightforward. Yes.
Amy's got a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Amy, you're on mute.
Amy, you're, I still can't hear you. Amy. I'm not hearing you. I don't know what to do. I'm sure it's a good question. Amber or Ashley, do you want to try to reach out to Amy and see what's up? Oh.
Amy was working earlier. Oh, they're kind of.
What do we think?
She said, just move on till go out and come back in.
Okay, sounds good. She won't be missing much with the next fund. Next fund is Fund 301, street maintenance. Our limitations on this fund include, this is just a revenue transfer out to Fund 100, Department 30. So it's pretty straightforward. And we're, we basically just matched this fund up with our expenditures from Fund 100, Department 30. And that's at 80,000. It is a decrease from, from last cycle. And I don't, Amber, will you remind me what the, I know we had some additional expenses that we had last year that we're not planning on this year and that accounted for most of the decrease?
Right, I think we had some exceptional items to, to do additional paint of the pavement markings and some traffic calming infrastructure. And so we backed out all those exceptional items and just put it to the, the basics here.
Okay.
Do we know if we have to do any more maintenance on those street striping items? Or did we catch up with that last year or this year? I know we didn't. We didn't end up doing any additional street striping this year. But we could look at it again for next year. I mean, they look pretty good. I haven't gotten any complaints. I know they're fading, but it'd be something we could do maybe next budget year. There's still time to throw it in as an exceptional item if you'd like to. Was it that we had done the tar over the cracks and that some of the pavements had been marked over? And so we were looking at possibly what cycle we'd need to repaint those anyway to make sure that, that they didn't start fading? So we budgeted for it this year, but we didn't do it. So maybe it would be worth just looking at if we need to do it this year or if we can delay it another year.
That's a good point. Amber, why don't you, why don't you and David circle up and talk about that? And maybe look at it again. If we need to, if we need to do another exceptional before next month, we can.
Okay, we can.
And if we, and if you can, if you legitimately think we can put it off another year, then that's fine too. But, but do, let's look at it. Okay, that, that gets us through street maintenance, 301, the street maintenance fund, 301. The next fund is the court security fund, the number 310. That's tab number six in your packet. As a reminder, our limitations on expenditures and transfers for this fund, they are statutorily restricted. This fund is statutorily restricted. So we have very limited ability to do much with this fund. It's some, the, these three court funds are kind of an enigma, to be honest with you. There are some statutory requirements and some statutory fees that we end up usually not ever seeing any revenue from. So it kind of restricts what we do. So anyway, we've got $1,000 for office security for the court and that's about all we can do. Unless there are any questions, we can move on to the next fund. Let's move on then to tab number seven is the court technology fund, Fund 320. This also is a statutorily restricted fund. Obviously dealing with court technology, we did have, I believe, we had some, we thought we were going to have some budgeted items for this fund last year that we ended up not doing. Amber, I think that was the, the software transition that we were looking at, but found out that there were some serious flaws with the software. Is that correct?
Right, I think we had budgeted to upgrade to version 10 of ENCODE and sent Carrie and Kim to ENCODE training and they learned there that there were some issues with ENCODE 10. And so we're just sticking with version nine until they're able to work out those bugs.
Yes. And then we have two reclassifications here. Before we, we had some misclassifications under this fund. We've reclassified those into our existing line items, 5300 and 5414 for computer software and support and computers. So we do have 4,000 budgeted for the, for those items for the court this year. But overall, it's, it's an overall decrease. Is there any, are there any questions on Fund 320? Not, we'll move on to Fund 330. This is tab number eight under your budget packet. Again, pretty straightforward, but we're still dealing with the same expenditures restriction, statutory restriction. So we've got just a placeholder of $100 from 5158 and the court efficiency fund. So not much to see there. With that, we will move on to tab number nine. This is our debt service fund series 2014. Number four, that's Fund 430. Again, that, this is all pretty much locked in. This is, includes all revenues. You know, obviously all revenues must be spent on our 2014 debt service and there are no fund-to-fund transfers out, out of this fund. So the worksheet just shows you what our paying agent fee is for the year as well as our bond principal and our bond interest on the 2014 debt. That's all pretty well calculated for us and there's not much we can do on it. So with that, we'll move on to Fund Debt Service Fund Series 2012, number four, Fund number 440. That's under tab 10. Again, same story, second verse. This is our debt service fund for our 2012 debt. You have the 5276 line item, which notes our paying agent fees. You have your 5342, your debt service interest and your 5343 line item, which is debt service 2012 principal. Again, that is calculated for us and we are locked in and committed to that. So there are really, there are no changes year over year. And with that, we will then move on to tab number 11. This is debt service fund series 2019. Fund number 450. And this is the, the only slight difference here is, as you know, we didn't actually issue debt in 2019. We refinanced old debt and this is reflective of, of that refinancing of that debt. $400 paying agent fees and then 5298 and 5299 are your bond principal and your bond interest. It is slightly, there's a slight decrease from last budget cycle. I don't remember the details on that. It was just how the, it was how the funds were organized or how the bonds were organized, rather. With that, we will move on to tab number 12. This is the debt service fund 2020, Fund number 460. This is a new fund from last year. This is, these are the, wait, am I? Wait, no, am I off? Amber, what is, what is the 2020?
This is the tax note.
Yeah, these, okay. Yeah, so this is the, these are the tax, this is the tax note. Debt service fund, again, paying agent fees of 400. You got your debt service there, 5348. And then the 5349 is the debt service principal for a total of 317. I think that's all of the debt service funds. With that, we'll move on to tab number 13, the drainage fund, 702. Again, a pretty straightforward fund. We've got engineering services here at 50,000. That's a slight decrease from last year. We have our MS4 expenditures budgeted at $3,000. Again, a decrease. We had most, I think we went, we went through the MS4 process last year. Is that right, Amber?
Right, permit renewal.
Yes, and so it's more on maintenance cycle this year. So it's significantly less. And then we have drainage expenditures in zone seven of $82,000. Just slight decrease. Now, is that, that expenditure, Amber, do we want to explain that now? That's our fund transfer that we've talked about, right? Yeah.
Right, this will be the fund transfer that will help to pay for the Hubbard Circle Drainage, Regional Drainage Project that council approved at the last council meeting.
So if you remember, when we created the RSDP process, we created independent funds for each one of those, for the RSDPs. And we created this funds by zone. And because we're doing the Hubbard Circle, it is in zone seven. So it'd be an appropriate expenditure for that. So our, our plan is, when we look at available revenue next time, you'll see an $82,000 credit to pay those tax notes with, with these funds that were set aside specifically for drainage in zone seven. So it'll be, it's a way for us to go ahead and utilize those funds as they were intended to be used and help pay for those, those tax notes in that area. And with that, we will go to the last tab 14, which is the wastewater fund, Fund 800. Let's see here, we have a few increases throughout this fund. Overall, we were able to squeeze out. Well, actually we weren't. We, we, this is a budget neutral. We were not able to get much savings here. Most of these increases are based on actual numbers that we experienced this year. I don't think there's anything that stands out to me on this fund. Amber, is there anything you would want to point out on this worksheet?
No, I think, you know, some of the increases like for travel and uniforms and accessories. You know, that'll be for additional training certifications. And then also later when we get to exceptional items and, and we've already talked about and interviewed for an additional public works employee. And so that's where some of those increases are coming in because we're going, going to have a new person.
Yeah. So are there any questions or comments on Fund 800?
So I have a question about the, the billing, the water, wastewater billing. So that is not the new person that we're hiring, right?
So, no. So the utility billing, as it is in there right now, reflects our contract with AWR. I do have it as an exceptional item to ask for a utility billing manager and also asking for utility billing and financial software. So if council were to approve those two exceptional items, there would be an opportunity to save utility billing collection, save that money. And then collection additional, as we build our public works team, we expect to be calling on AWR fewer and fewer times. So we hope that that will go down as well.
Okay, so there is another step that we have to take to approve bringing the billing in-house?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, good question and great segue. That wraps up our overall fund review of the remaining funds outside of Fund 100. And with that, let's go back up to the top of the budget packet under tab number two, which is budget.
Sorry Gavin. Yes, sir. Sorry to interrupt Gavin. I saw that Amy had her hand raised. I wasn't sure if her question was answered.
Okay, are you back with Amy?
Can you hear me now? Great. I had a similar question with Sarah. So glad you asked that, Sarah. And then I was gonna ask a question that, I'll ask Amber offline about how we calculate how much we need for the grinder pump item each year. Because when I just peruse through AWR's bills to us every month, it seems like there's a new grinder pump like every other month. So that's just a question I've had about that particular item. But we can talk about it offline.
Yeah, I think that's a good question.
Go ahead, Amber.
I was gonna say, it's been a rough year. I think that since the, the system is all the same age, it seems like everything was breaking down last year at the same time. But yeah, I, I'm agreeing with you. That seems like it's kind of.
Amber, Amber, is the grinder pump, isn't that the one where the requested line item was like in between? It, it was more than you needed to buy one, but not enough to buy two? Is that, was it that?
Yeah.
So we actually, the, when we did the departmental meeting with David, we got to that, I don't remember the line item. We can find it if we need to. But we, we had a discussion about how much those grinder pumps cost. There was, he had requested enough to buy one and a half grinder pumps. And so we, we went ahead and upped that to, to buy two, two whole grinder pumps as opposed to one, so.
You know, as I'm thinking through that, I was kind of, I'm, I'm sorry, Amy. So AWR, where we charge their repair of the grinder pumps is to utility billing collection additional. But we do, there is a policy, an ordinance that says the city will replace the first grinder pump. And so, yes, we have it in the budget to buy two grinder pumps, but you will see there are some repairs from AWR, particularly on the lift stations.
Is this also part of the conversation with the disposable wipes that technically aren't disposable? Is, is this where this could come back in? So for our prizable audience that's joined us today, in case, or for the sake of a public service announcement, most of these disposable, single-use wipes that have become pretty commonplace and frequently used during this pandemic, if we could encourage everybody to make sure those end up in the trash can rather than in your toilet. As you can tell by this conversation, it may actually have a very beneficial impact on our bottom, city's bottom line with regards to our infrastructure.
That's very good public service announcement, Mayor.
I gotta be good for something every now and then.
No, that's great, a great point. Any other questions on any of these funds? Okay, and with that, do, travel back up to tab number two, under budget. Since our last meeting, we have added in, and by we, I don't mean me. We have added all of the exceptional items that have been submitted. You'll see first a summary sheet. If you just want to follow along on a summary sheet, that gives you a synopsis of, of the exceptional items for all funds and the exceptional items for the general fund. As you, and you know, as we've done in years past, you'll see the first three exceptional items are AF1A, AF1B, and AF1C. AF1B, and AF1C. Those are, again, just to recap what we've started doing the past several years, is i- if the desire is to do a COLA, we wouldn't adopt all three of these. We would adopt, if we adopted any, we would adopt one of the three. And you have three options to look at what the cost for each one of those are. That does include the COLA, and it does include the benefits with, with the included COLA. So with that, we will start at the top, and I will start with AF1A, which is the COLA at 1%. Just a refresher here of how to read the exceptional item request. You'll see the total cost noted there, three quarters of the way down the page. So that would be, if we did a 1% COLA, that would be a $14,276 cost to all funds, or not to all funds, but to across, across the funds, that would be the total. We then will take a quick look at exceptional item request number AF1B. That's a 2% COLA for your consideration, which would come in at around $28,500. And then we will move on to all funds. Request number AF1C, which is a 3% COLA, which would be a total of $42,830. Again, we're not making decisions on these tonight, but that does give you context of what those three different levels of staff COLA raises would, would, would include. We'll now move on to, yes, sir.
Gavin, if I could just start to interrupt again, if we could make sure that administration, and, and I'll, I'll do some of the lifting as well, Gavin, if you could also maybe weigh in on basically what the authorities are suggesting, the current economic impacts are going to be on the year going forward that might actually help us inform, be informed better as to whether a 1%, 2%, or 3% COLA is, I guess, more appropriate when it is time for us to make that decision.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. You know, obviously, it won't. The information that I'll have as of next Monday, it won't drill down, obviously, to our particular scenario for Rollingwood. But on the 20th, next Monday, I'll have, I'll have the updated cer- certified revenue estimate from the comp trailer, which will give a lot of that projection. So I'm happy to provide that for our, or at least a synopsis of that, so we can kind of have a sense of it. It's not going to be ready.
Yeah, I suspect as much. Any, any additional data we can, we can have, though, to make sure we're making an informed decision would be helpful. Thanks, Gavin.
Yes, sir. Now we'll move on to all fund, request number AF2, all funds two. This is a, this is a request from city administrator to, to adjust some of the salary levels and some of the titles within our, within our staff, some of our, some of our go-to staff, and I will let Amber kind of lay out her thoughts on this.
Sure, so just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and council for getting the excellent team we have on board today. And just want to recognize that they've all been working really hard and they just do a really good job. And so I want to recognize their effort and their performance. And so would like to give new titles that reflect the level of responsibility and decision-making that they're, they're actually executing on, and that then give them a raise also to reflect those same things as well.
And Amber, is it safe to say on a, a few of these, not maybe not all of them, but some of these reflect kind of a change in job description as well, to some extent?
Right, I mean, yeah, a little bit change in job description for, you know, for Ashley in particular, she would be Assistant City Administrator slash City Secretary. So she would have a new level of, you know, decision-making in, in her role, in her position. You know, Carrie would move from manager to Director of Development Services, which I think is more reflective of, I mean, she's making very responsible decisions for the city. Abel, he doesn't care, but I think he needs a title that's reflective of, of his contribution to the city. So I would like to make him also director. He's finance manager today. The chief, of course, don't need to change his title, but would like to change his pay. I mean, I think his leadership during what's going on in the nation and it's really important to recognize, and, and we are very fortunate to have his leadership in his position. And then I would like to make Eli Public Works Superintendent, so he could have some management responsibility in the field and then also give him a bump in pay.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, Amber. So if there are questions for Amber, jump in. Not, we can, we can keep moving.
Did we look at the year-over-year on that, what it's cost us? It's 10,800 in benefits and then the the COLA. Have we projected it out just to see what the cost of that is going to be over the next five years? We, we talked about that some for, for the police raises, when we were talking about the step raises and cycles. Just the council wanting to see that data of what it's going to look like. Have y'all, is that something that we're going to talk about?
We, we can, and we can, and we can also discuss too. In fact, in my mind, we would probably adjust, if, if the sentiment is to try to do some sort of COLA, we would probably either exempt these individuals out of the COLA and, and make this be, be the equivalent of that. We haven't really talked about that, but it's, it's a fair discussion. I don't know that we've looked at the out-year, I don't know that we've looked at the out-year costs for this, other, other than to say this would obviously be baked in from that point forward. And so that, you know, the marginal difference on a future COLA would be, you know, 1% or 2% or 3% of that number for the most part, I think. But we can, we can give that a little thought between now and next month.
And this is probably bringing our employees up to more of a level of pay to what other municipalities are paying for these positions and also a title bump, just for some morale and retention. Yes, the, the salary survey that, and then look at the neighboring jurisdictions salaries does support this information. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to request number AF3. This is a staff recommendation that we've talked a little bit about already, but Amber, I'll let you talk about this position, which would be a new public works operator position.
Yeah, I think we've had some discussions that we feel like we're a little light on public works and, you know, if one person even wants to go on vacation, it, it really stretches the guys thin. And also, since we have taken on maintenance duties of the fields and the park, we thought it important to add an additional employee. And so this is what that would look like. We did have interviews on Monday, had excellent slate of candidates, was very impressed. Really liked one and checking references and would like to offer the position. He's got a lot of skills in public works. He's worked in, in public works for 10 years. And so I'm excited that he may come to Rollingwood.
And Amber, sorry, so go ahead, go ahead, Mayor.
I was gonna, just going to add that historically, public works typically would have a director and three, I guess, staff working for, for said director. And that it's only been over the course of the last couple of years that we haven't, we elected not to replace the missing third after Jasper resigned. Is that fair? And, and again, the difference is that during that interim, the city had contracted out maintenance of the park to clean scapes and per recommendation of the Park Commission that was subsequently accepted and acted upon by the city council. The city count, or the city is now once again taking on maintenance for the park. Is that correct context, Amber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, and it's great context and a good point, Mayor. That, that would largely offset, it's largely a wash in terms of the, in terms of the budget, so.
Right, thanks.
And it's that, and it's that savings that we've, that we have now is, is, is why you could potentially go ahead and hire someone now, but this would take care of, of that position going forward. With that, we'll move on to AF. I guess we've got a repeat number here. I know that's AF4. I think it's marked as AF3, but we're opening it as, it will be AF4. This is the utility billing manager position. This, the cost of this position is, is not, it's not technically an all funds position. It actually only affects two funds, Water Fund 200 and Wastewater Fund 800. 50/50 split between those two funds for a total of $65,000. Amber, why, this is, this is, we've given a lot of, we've had a lot of talk about bringing some of the utility billing in-house. This relates to what Sarah was talking about a moment ago. So Amber, do you want to give us a little context here?
Sure, I think we contract right now with AWR to do our utility billing. And really, it's just an extra step. I mean, staff still has to be involved in the middle of, you know, making water billing adjustments or checking on water bills for people. And so we have to contact AWR, then they make the change, and then they send it back to us. So I think having somebody in-house who has some utility billing experience could help us migrate to in-code, and then we would have that in-house, have better accountability, improved efficiency, and I think we could save some money.
And, which is a good segue, council members, if you'll look at the bottom of this exceptional item request form, it's a little different than you see on some forms, because this does have a direct offset savings from fund 200 and an offset savings from fund 800. From fund 200, it would be $58,000, from fund 800, it would be $42,000 for total savings offset of $100,000. So you're spending 65 to save 100. So you're, you're to the good by a significant number there. We'll move on to all funds, request number five. I think it is marked as four, but it's actually five. This is the additional month of reserves. This is, this is my exceptional item, and I'm going to put it to you for consideration. Again, we're not making any of these decisions tonight. It's also, you know, when we come back next month and we have fully vetted the, and given you projected revenue and projected all funds available for your, for your use with these exceptional items. You know, this, this exceptional item could be one that we decide not to do, that we decide it's too, too much of a price tag. It is, it is moving. We currently, and we've worked very hard the last two budget cycles to, to increase our budgeted reserves to about 25%, which is, which is at the time what the auditor was recommending to us. I mean, that is, that is kind of standard operating procedure. Because we're such a small city and because the actual numbers, the actual budget numbers that we deal with are, are so small relative to, to many other cities. The hard numbers are low enough that the auditor's recommendation to us was to, to take that good work that we've, we've done to get to 25% reserves and to actually, which is, which equates to three months in reserves. Their recommendation is for us to actually have four months in reserve in, in our account at all times. So I guess no good deed goes unpunished. We've worked hard to get to the reserve that we currently have based on the audit recommendations and the credit rating agencies' recommendations. And then when we got there, they said, well, really, you need one more month. So that's what this, that's what this exceptional item request is for, is to earmark that one additional month, so that we would have four months reserve because of our size. Again, it's not the end of the world if we didn't do it. But we, we do potentially run the risk of, of getting dinged on our credit rating if, if we don't. So it's something to consider. Again, I think it's probably the type of decision that we would hold off on until we, we kind of get the full picture of how much we, we have to spend in all funds, and we'll know that more next month. Does that make sense?
It does, Gavin. Thanks for putting it together. And, and with, I'd like to see us all struggle and strive to make sure that we can accept this as a, an exceptional item. It's, it's a smart, it's a smart conservative move fiscally for the city.
I, I agree, and, and we will do our best to try to get us there. Okay, that, that concludes all of our exceptional items that would affect all of the funds across the board, or at least multiple funds across the board. With that, we can move a little further down to our general fund, exceptional items. And I will open up with exceptional item request number 100-10-1. Obviously, that's fund 100, Department 10, request number one. This is for the comprehensive, long-range plan. Obviously, this is a statutorily required plan that we have technically had in the past. But it technically is not all that the statute envisions, and so we're doing, trying to undertake making that more compliant with statute. Obviously, we're all familiar with comprehensive plan. And I believe, Amber, correct me if I'm wrong, this is kind of a done deal. This is just a continuation of the budget approval that we did last cycle. And, and we're already under contract for it, and this is finishing out that existing contract, right?
Correct. They expect to be done by January, so we expect about half of the expenses to run into the 2021 year fiscal year.
So it's technically, council member, this is technically an exceptional item, but it's also technically, we're already on the hook for it, so there's not a lot we can do about it. So that's what that one is. Moving on to the next exceptional item, this is 100-10-2. This is MOPAC legal expenses, an issue that we're familiar with, an exception, an exceptional item that we're familiar with from last budget cycle. Amy, as always, does great work and brought this to us to, to reconsider, to not reconsider, but to consider again, continuing this, this practice that we, that we started last, last budget cycle. It is significantly lower than what we budgeted last cycle, and Amy, I'll let you give us some, some thoughts on it.
Great. So last budget cycle, we had an amount that was higher than this. I believe it was $75,000. I put in $40,000. At this point, we haven't spent very much of that $75,000, mainly because when we look, the, the project was ours. was already supposed to have been designed out and we would have been well into public comment having occurred. And maybe the, the, the design already being at the Texas Transportation Commission for review. But due to delays that CTRMA experienced and then the pandemic, and now some things that they're doing and how they're budgeting for the coming year. I think that we're probably at least six months to a year out still from a design. And so there's a few things that I think would be good to do with the remaining, with, with some of the budget before the end of this budget cycle that I'm going to look at. But it, I, I think this is still a placeholder here and not, not necessarily that we would spend this whole amount, but we would have it available to be able to study the things that are on here. And with, with having Bickerstaff retain now, they have a lot of experts that can help us do evaluations that give us data like impact on property tax revenues, impact on our commercial corridor and how that might impact sales tax revenues and things like that. Air congestion, I mean, air quality and traffic congestion. So it, I, I think this is a little more of a conservative placeholder than, than last year, but it's still important to have it there because we just don't know how much work is going to happen and when on the project.
Yeah, I think it's, Amy, those are all great points. And I think it is, it is a good placeholder so that if we do get in a pinch and if something starts moving fast on a transportation project that we need to get engaged on quickly, we're not scrambling, having to try to find the money to, to retain somebody to help us on it. And, you know, if we don't use it, great. And we've got some cushion there to, to apply to, to other projects, so.
I mean, I would have put in the same amount again, but I feel like we're being a little bit more conservative in our budgeting for different reasons. And so I would.
I noted, I noted it when you submitted it. So I appreciate you doing that.
Sure.
Okay. We'll try to move quickly. We've got five more minutes. Pulling up request number 10-100-10-3. This is for the ENCODE software. This is a hefty price tag. But Amber, I'll let you explain. And she had to explain it to me. We've talked about ENCODE a lot in the past. And we do have ENCODE, I believe, in our courts right now. But this is to, to more fully outfit the entire city with ENCODE. And I'll let Amber explain what that means.
Right, so this would give the ability of our court software. We have ENCODE also now with the new records management system that the police department just implemented and got up and running. And so, you know, where possible, the software could communicate back and forth with court. You know, say someone pays their ticket online, it would automatically hit our financial platform. Whereas today, Abel has to go in and make a manual entry into our financial software. So this would, you know, all talk to each other. It'd save a step for Abel. We like ENCODE, we've used it before. I think it's secure. I think it, it, it's hard to change. So I think it's secure in that way as well. I just think we'd be more efficient. And I, I think that we would, again, have a possibility for some cost savings. I know that the, the utility billing software that AWR uses is, is outdated. And we struggle with keeping access to the data, even, even our, just our viewing access. It seems like we're constantly losing access and we can't print. And so if we had this, we would have immediate access to the information and could assist the customer immediately rather than waiting a week or so to get information back from AWR.
Okay, great.
We have overseen the Liberty Hill transition to the ENCODE software. So you've been through the process before and are familiar with that? Correct, yes. We did a complete process from AVR to, to ENCODE. It was, it was hard work, but worth it. In the end, we were very happy with what we ended up with. And, and we were able to be more transparent with our financials and utility billing information. And, and so it was, it was definitely beneficial.
Okay, I'm going to pick up the pace here because we've got just a few more minutes and we really need to get through some big exceptional items here. So think about that, think about ENCODE. Let's move on to request number 100-40-1. This is the salary scale that we've previously contemplated that the police chief is, is bringing back in the form of an exceptional item for us to more fully vet. And I'll let the chief, if he's available, talk to us about it.
Chief, do you want to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. So this is the exact same salary scale that I had proposed in February when I submitted the recruiting and retention analysis that was provided to the council. And what it does is it basically brings us into, I guess, parity with the region. As, as you were aware by the study we conducted, we are really at the bottom end of, of central Texas in terms of the pay benefits and, and salary that we provide. So having come in at this department at a time when we were, you know, 40% short on staffing, it's my job to make sure as much as possible that Rollingwood doesn't experience that again and that we were always staff sufficiently to provide sufficient public safety to the, to the community. So I think it's, it, it may look like a large increase compared to what we have now, but it's, it really wouldn't put us anywhere but the middle of the pack for this community. We have, we have a COVID going on. We have the civil unrest. We have all these things occurring, yet we were able to hire during that and bring ourselves fully staffed. So these officers are here, they're dedicated to this community. And I think it's just simply the right thing to do to, to bring them into pay parity with the people that are backing them up or the people they're backing up on calls every day.
Thank you, Chief. Good explanation. Does anyone have a question for Chief on that? Chief, stay unmuted for the, for the next couple of items here in case we have questions for you. I'll take the next one for you. Pulling up request number 100-40-2. This is a retirement payout reserve. As you, if council members know, obviously, as we have individuals retire or retire, we have a, we have a, an amount that's owed upon retirement based on their accrual of their time while they're here. In the past, and we've, we've experienced this problem with, with our administrative staff, but we have a similar problem on occasion with the police. We have, as of last year, started dedicating a retirement reserve specifically for that purpose so that we don't get caught if someone retires unexpectedly and we're not caught having to scramble and move, move dollars from other budget items to cover that cost that we're on the hook for. This is, this is applying that same principle to the police department, to, to Department 40. And the concept here being is we would just start putting a, an earmark of $10,000 a year for that payout reserve. And we can, Abel can calculate what our liability risk is. And obviously, everyone's not going to retire at the same time, but it's probably a good practice for us to at least set aside a little bit of that money. And then if we don't use it, if we don't use these dollars that are our retirement reserve for PD, and if we don't use the dollars that are reserved for retirement in our admin fund, at the end of the year, we will transfer those funds to a liability fund that will, that will, that will keep on hand for when those retirements do occur. So it's a way to, to sort of slowly plan and build for that retirement so that we're not caught with a huge sum. If two or three folks decide to retire on the same year, we're not stuck with that. We've actually have some money in reserve for that occasion. Is that a decent explanation, Amber, Abel?
Yes, it is.
Okay. With that, I will pull up a report. Let's see, exceptional item request 100-40, I'm sorry, dash three, I believe. Three. And I'll turn back to the police chief to talk to us about his request for a new Gator for the police department.
Thank you, Councilman. So as you're aware, we currently have a, I believe it's Kawasaki mule that the department has used to great effect. Currently, it's got a large tank on it, I believe with some sort of herbicide. The street, or the public works folks routinely borrow this vehicle. It's, it's, it provides great utility for them too, to get into the park, empty the trash, take care of tasks where a truck can't get in. But we also use it to, to great effect as well, not just ACL and special events like that, but we like to use it to get out there in the mornings or to access areas of the, of the Rollingwood that aren't as particularly accessible by, by car to make sure we're patrolling those sufficiently. And I think you can speak to a lot of the residents. We have a lot of positive contacts where you can stop and engage in more community-based policing than you could, you know, in a, in a large vehicle driving by where you're able to stop and engage. You're able to see a lot more, pay attention to details and, and things going at that speed, kind of that open air. It's just a, it's a useful tool. And by providing the one we have now to the public works, then that's an expense they would not have to incur. And then that would allow us to procure a newer vehicle to continue to use in the fashion that we use. And I think for us, it would actually be more advantageous to have maybe additional seating as well than the current layout, which is a two, sort of a two-seater.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, Chief. With that, we'll pull up exceptional item request number 100-40-4. This is PD's request for reserve officer pay. And I'll let the chief explain this. I think this is some of what we're currently doing. And it would be on top of the other salary scale that, that we've already contemplated. So Chief, do you want to talk to us about it?
Yes, thank you. So previously, the council had allowed us to kind of reconstitute our reserve program. And I was able to bring some folks on with, with offering some pay, which is, you know, as you probably can gather from the, the tone of the country right now, getting into law enforcement is difficult, recruiting is difficult. We've already gone over that even before some of the current events. So having folks come in and work for free is even more of a challenge. So with, we were able to pay some of the reserve program with our cost savings from the vacancies that we had during this fiscal year. However, if we're going to continue that program into the future and remain fully staffed, which is my goal, we need to have a reserve unit on reserve. We can't wait till there's a shortage or there's an emergency to try and recruit and background hire and get folks. We need, we need to have some folks that are online. And right now, you know, they're able to work on, right now, I have a reserve officer that's been pretty much running the RMS implementation. And also, you know, we want to get to a position where an officer can be sent to training or take off thick or, or be on vacation. And we could have less of an impact on our, on our operations because we could plug in a reserve officer. But to have a robust, you know, reserve troop, if you will, requires the, the salary to, to pay those individuals.
And Chief, I got a, I have a quick question for you. Obviously, we, we approved this line item previous, in the previous budget when, when you were, you know, extremely short-staffed. Obviously, that's not the case today. So if we were to budget this full amount, is it a situation where it's truly reserved? Like, it's, it's potential that you wouldn't need this full amount theoretically since you are fully staffed now, right?
Theoretically. But again, we, now, now that we're fully staffed, we do, we do have officers that have been working quite a while, working multiple shifts, working overtime, not having a lot of breaks. So the thought is that also we could start letting more folks go, not burn them out and plug these individuals in. So I certainly, that estimate was, that, that number's kind of on the higher side, but it, you know, it, we, we can't wait. We can't wait till there are extreme vacancies to, to use these individuals. We need to, you know, they need a reason to stay on the program. They need the practice. They need to stay trained and stay current with current events and our, you know, our new record system. Everything, every time we make changes, we don't want to have to bring them off from being offline and retrain them. So there'd be a, I, I need to, I need to make sure that the reserves get sufficient hours to, to be reserve-ready, so to speak, so that they can operate as, as officers and, and have as little disruption to our operations and provide that service to the community.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for the chief? And we should be able to move quickly on these last three. I'll pull up a request number 100-55-1. This is for parks for equipment. And Amber, tell us, I'm drawing a blank. Tell us real quickly what this was.
Sure. Right, we've never had an equipment line item in the park budget before. And so David wanted to possibly add another lawnmower or any other equipment he might need in the, to help take care of the park.
Pretty basic, and I am all for an extra lawnmower. With that, I'll pull up request number 100-55-2. This is the Plaiscape mulch. This, this comes before council every once in a while, and it's just a continuing maintenance and operation issue. This is to make sure that we have the proper depth to maintain our safety requirements for the Plaiscape. So it's mulch for $5,000. Pretty straightforward. With that, we will move on to request number 100-55-3. And I'll turn it over to Amber to walk through this exceptional item request for parks.
Um, this came in from a park commission member, Colleen Preheim. I don't see her on there. I wasn't included with where they got the bid to do all this, this work. But I think the, um, yeah, it looks like they received an estimate from Cleanscapes to perform some of this work in the park. And it looks like they're going to add some gravel edging. It looks like it's going to beautify the park.
Okay, between now and next month, Amber, if you would spend a little time with David, kind of looking through this and be able to, to give us a little bit more granular detail on some of these items. And I, and I'll work with you too on that as well. Most, most of these are not huge ticket items. But we'll kind of give that some, some thought. And I'm, I'm not opposed to this. We have budgeted significant dollars for the commission in the past that have not been spent. And so I, I just want to make sure that if we budget it, it's achievable and it's something that can be followed through on whoever, you know. And so get with David and y'all think through what the, if we have the ability and the labor to execute on this.
Will do.
Any other questions on this? Yes.
Yeah, can we also get a map or something to show where the locations are? Because it's all spelled out by locations, but no indication of where location one is.
Great point, Sarah.
It looks like Colleen and the park commission have put in considerable work here. I'd say thank you for that without question. This is, certainly looks like the start to some really thoughtful, thoughtful approach.
Yeah, a great point. And yes, this is, I really appreciate how it's laid out. It's, it's very, very thorough, more, more so than, than I've ever seen. So that's great. Amy?
Yeah, if y'all are going to go through it, it might be helpful too, if there could be, because I, I also appreciate how it's laid out. I wonder if there could be on each line item a marking, whether it's a one-time cost or whether it's something that would need to be repeated so that we can get an understanding of maintenance or replacement costs. And I, because I think that's something that we have really always tried to get going. Different people have worked really hard to get that done, and perhaps with this layout, it would be a way to do that.
Yeah, great point. Okay. You, you, did you get all that, Amber?
I did.
Great. Okay. Council members, that concludes your friendly neighborhood budget workshop. I hope you enjoyed it.
Thanks for all the work, Gavin and, and Amber, Ashley and the rest of the staff. Appreciate the time you put in.
And Ashley.
Sorry. I, I certainly, I certainly thought, Ashley, if, if Ashley didn't roll off my tongue, my apologies, Ashley.
And Abel, I mean, as long as we're naming names.
I tell you, I, I, every, there's, there's been a lot of hands on this, and I appreciate every one of them.
Yeah. That's it for me.
Good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Buck.
We did go along, obviously, tonight, members, but next, next month should be easier. This was, this is always the, the most arduous night when we go through the exceptional items. So we should, we'll, we'll try to, at the next meeting, move quicker for decisions on all of the exceptional items. And then before that, we'll give you a better sense of our revenue projections.
Great. Okay, so we'll close out the budget workshop, and we will move on to the regularly scheduled city council meeting. Do we need to make any adjustments there, Amber or Ashley? Are we just ready to go?
If, if you want to, since, since you came in and Buck came in, if you want to just do another roll call and recognize everybody who's here.
You're good. Yeah, well, you bet. So we'll move on then, sorry, assuming I can get the agenda back up. We'll start with a roll call. Sarah?
Sarah Hudson.
Gavin Massengill?
Gavin Massengill here.
Amy Patillo?
Here.
Wendy Hundley?
Here.
Buck Shapiro?
Buck Shapiro here.
And we have Amber Lewis, city administrator, Ashley Wayman, city secretary. And Amber, can you confirm for us that we have our city attorney on as well?
You do. Charlie is here.
I am here.
Welcome, Charlie. Good to hear you. All right. Well, with that, we've had budget workshop. Item two, we'll move on to public comments. Just as a reminder, guys, we're going to try to limit comments to three minutes. If you're joining us on your laptop or computer, there is a hand icon at the bottom of the screen. If you click on that, it will turn it blue. You will then be called upon in the order in which the hands are raised. Amber would say your name and/or number, depending on how you've logged into the system. You will then need to unmute yourself to be sure that you've unmuted yourself. Your microphone should turn, the microphone icon located near the hand icon should turn from an orange to a blue. You'll have a similar situation on a tablet or your iPhone. If you're calling in, I'm still not overly familiar with those instructions, so I'll, I'll let Ashley fill us in there.
If you're calling in, star, we'll read the menu, and then the number two will have you raise your hand.
Great. Thank you, Ashley. With that, we'll open public comments at 7:18. This is, anybody signed up or which wishes to address the council regarding an item, not otherwise on the agenda? Now's a great time to click the hand icon if that fits the description of why you've joined us this evening. Amber, do we have any hands raised?
We do not.
Okay. Going once, going twice. Anything?
No.
We're, we're going to go ahead and close down public comments then at 7:18 as well. And first up for a public hearing, item three, public hearing, discussion and possible action on a replat for 603 Riley Road. Amber, if I could, I guess, is Carrie also joined us?
Carrie's on. Do you want to go ahead and open up the public hearing?
Sorry, sure. Yeah, I'll open up the public hearing rather than typically, I guess we need a lot of context for this one. Okay, we'll open up the public hearing at 7:19. If anyone is present that wishes to speak, now's a great time. We'll try to keep our comments to three minutes, please. Do we have any hands raised, Amber?
No.
Okay.
Mayor Barrett Lepore has his hand raised. He can, you could also recognize him during your discussion if you would rather. Otherwise, if you want him to speak now, he can too.
So Barrett, I'd, I'd say that's, that's up to you. Give us a signal, either put your hand up or down. You can, you can speak during public comments or when the council takes up discussion.
Okay, he lowered his hand.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, don't go too far. Barrett, we'll have you around for questions just in case council has any. Do we have any other hands raised?
No.
I'll tell you what, in that instance, we'll go ahead and open it up for council's discussion and possible action on, on this plating. If you recall, this was in front of us last month with a couple of items for consideration, reconsideration.
And Carrie, do you want to tee this up for the council, please?
Absolutely. Thanks, council. Thanks, mayor. This plat came to us a few months ago. There were some questions about the layout, which have been addressed with some historical documents. There were some deficiencies as far as the, just how the easements, right-of-way were noted. Those have been corrected, and I would request that you move to approve this plat. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Carrie.
That was a lot easier than the last time.
That's what happens when you got some good, good folks, they take good comments, instructions, and then execute. And I think that's what you've just seen.
Good deal.
I'll make the motion to approve the replat for 603 Riley Road.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Wendy and a second from Gavin. Counsel, do you have, do we have discussion? Would, would you like to hear from Barrett now? Sarah, go ahead, please.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm, it looks like the side setback on the street is set to 20 feet. Is that because it forms a block with the house on, that it backs up to on timberline? It also has 20 foot on the side?
That's correct.
Okay.
Great. What, I'll tell you what, does Barrett have his hand raised? Would he, Barrett, would you still like to comment? This will be your last opportunity.
You have, you can unmute yourself if you would like.
Sure. I really don't have any much else to add. I'm available for more questions if you guys have any.
Great. Thanks, Barrett. Counsel, you have a motion in front of you. Do you have additional discussion or questions either for Carrie or Barrett? Not hearing any, if I could encourage you guys to consider taking action on the motion on the table.
Vote.
Call for the vote? All right. Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, council. And Barrett, I appreciate your time and thanks for joining us. If there's nothing else on item three, we will move on to item four, public hearing, discussion and possible action on a variance from the city's code of ordinances, sections 24-91B2, to allow for a building-mounted sign on an office building and for the lettering to exceed 24 inches in overall height and exceed four square feet in total surface area requested by Jacob's Engineering Group. Now, counsel, just for a little bit of context, I actually thought we had addressed this already, and that is because, that is because this is a very similar request that we have previously approved on other, in other situations. So for what that is worth, this is a new request, and for whatever reasons, I'm having trouble pulling up the items to walk you through it. So if somebody else, Carrie, maybe give a little bit of input. Ah, here we go. Got it. So this is a large lettering that would be mounted on the side of the building. I believe it's the Miravista building. Is that correct? Proper term for the building. In any case, I, I believe it was formerly a Plains Capital Bank was the lettering. I do not believe that the lettering or the signage faces any of our residents. This is downtown, or into our town, rather, and in fact, faces towards City of Austin. So there, there is some high-level context. Counsel, well, I guess I'll open up for public hearing here at 7:26. Again, if anybody has their hand raised or wishes to speak on this item, now's a great time.
Mayor, we have Heather. Heather, go ahead. You have the floor.
On this item? No. No, I'm, I'm not interested. Thank you, though.
Okay.
Sorry, I just downloaded that. Sorry.
No problem. Glad, glad you're here, Heather. If there's anybody else in the public that wishes to speak on item four with regards to Jacob's Engineering Group? No hands, Amber?
No hands.
No hands. In that case, counsel, this is, you know, I don't want to say par for the course, but as I mentioned before, this is not an uncommon thing to, to come in front of us. Do you guys want to take any action, open this up for discussion?
I'll just say the criteria for approval under section 24-124 for the variance is that there are the special circumstances applying to the structure and that are unique to the particular business. And I think what the variance is asking for is for bigger lettering and a lighting, lighting of the sign because of the size of the building, so that the sign would be wall. And also wants to know if there's harmony with the purpose of the article, and it won't harm any other neighborhood or vicinity of the adjacent properties or public welfare. So as you said, it doesn't face any neighbors, and then that it doesn't depart from the provisions of the article more than is required to identify the applicant's business. So it seems to be a standard size, the same as what we've approved in the past. And those are the, the main four criteria for the, for the variance of the sign request.
Yep. Thank you, Wendy. Go ahead, Sarah.
So there's a page in the attachments that, out of our ordinances, that talks about what is required, what, what's allowed, and there's a difference between a commercial building and an office building. And I guess I'm not clear what the difference is between the two, because a commercial building is allowed to have illuminated letters, an office building is not, and their, their variance request doesn't include lighting, it just has requests for variance on the size and the, you know, the height and then the total surface area.
It has a night view in the diagram on the second page.
Right. They're, they're showing that it's illuminated, but they're not asking for that to be a variance, and I can't tell what the difference is supposed to be between a commercial building and an office building and which one this qualifies as, because an office building does not allow illuminated signs. And they haven't, they didn't call out that they were asking for a variance on the illumination. So what's the difference between a commercial building and an office building, and which one does this qualify as?
Man, I really wish we had a comprehensive plan that we had already adopted to, to walk us through that exact question. I'm glad we're undertaking that process, but I, I think it's a really good question. And, and I'll be honest with you, I don't have an answer for it. I, again, I default to the fact that the underscoring of our need for a comprehensive look of exactly this type of thing. Amber or Carrie, you guys have had a little more interaction with the requesting party?
So there is a definition of office building. It's in section 24-19. Commercial building means a building with a retail use permitted in a C2 zoning district. And office building means a building primarily providing office space for businesses, organizations, professionals and individuals, and perhaps providing auxiliary services for the tenants of the building, such as a snack bar.
So this sounds like an office building?
This would be.
How is it zoned? Is it zoned?
I believe it's zone C2. Let me check. Charlie, the way the variance is requested, that wouldn't preclude the council from also giving it a variance to the backlit sign, would it?
I'm more concerned about what the agenda says. The agenda. Agenda says, public hearing, discussion and possible action on a variance from the city's code of ordinances, section 24-91, to allow for building, building and for the lettering to exceed 24 inches in overall height and exceed four. to allow for building and for the lettering to exceed 24 inches in overall height and exceed four square foot in total surface area." So you would be limited to granting a variance based on the agenda language.
So they're considered planned unit development, part of the Miravista. And it looks like we would need to reference what regulations they have regarding signage in their PUD agreement.
Right.
So I would ask that council not take action on this item until staff is able to compare the PUD agreement regulations against what they're asking for in regard to their sign. And then depending on what is allowed and not or not allowed, we would bring back a different item to you.
If it's allowed in the PUD, then they don't need a variance, right?
Right.
Right.
But they'd still need a variance for the sign size, just not the lighting?
I'd have to chat to see if they fell under the sign size with regard to, like, sometimes they say we adopt all the regulations in C2 zoning, except for these regulations, then they might list them out. So we will, we will reference that and bring that back to you.
Go ahead, Amy.
Is this one of the PUDs? You know, there's a few of the PUDs that the original documentation isn't as clear. Does this one actually have documentation similar to the Endeavor PUD?
I hope so.
Okay, great.
Well put.
Yeah. Sarah, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Amber, thanks for the clarification. Counsel, I think you've gotten probably good advice there to not take action at this point and allow staff to research a little bit more and we'll talk about bringing it back. Is that good with everybody?
Yes.
Great. Okay. If there's nothing else on item four, we'll close it down. And then assuming I don't have any any opposition, I'm going to call up item 13 in conjunction with item five. And I'm going to suggest to counsel, recommend to counsel action to terminate a contract for 503 Vale. And then depending on where we go from there, we can see what other discussion points are necessary. With that, I will call up item five, public hearing, discussion, and possible action on a request to amend the zoning classification for the property commonly known as 503 Vale Street from residential to governmental and institutional, as well as item 13, discussion and possible action on the purchase or termination of contract for 503 Vale.
Taking the mayor's comments there, I'll take a stab at 13 first and move to terminate the contract for 503 Vale.
Sorry, did I get a second?
Yes.
Sorry, was it Amy? Okay. Sorry. Yeah, guys. I have, I have, I have a motion from Gavin. Where's my second?
I had seconded, but Amy did too.
No, that's, that's, either way, I just want to make sure we're putting it down. So we have a motion from Gavin and a second from Sarah that'll open it up for discussion, counsel.
I'll just say that I appreciate all of the time that we have spent talking about this. And I appreciate the public participation that we've had and the comments that we've had. And I think it's been a really good thing because it's brought attention to a lot of the different issues that we're facing as a city. And I hope that the participation here on this issue will translate over into participation in the comprehensive plan and that folks will continue to comment and probably continue to offer some solutions so that we might have multiple options to look at and explore. And I'm open to exploring options and any options that are not there. And I appreciate everybody's time and thoughts on it.
Thanks, Wendy. I'm actually going to take it one step further and let a little over 100 households know that we've got a list. And we're, I'm expecting you guys, now that you've been part of the conversation. This is obviously something that you're passionate enough about to research, hopefully research thoroughly. I am hoping and expecting, as I think a lot of people on this, this dais are as well, that you are going to stay engaged, you're going to continue to spend your time, thoughts, and efforts along with us to help solve the challenges that face our, all of our community. I would echo Wendy in thanking everybody for turning out. We had not quite 20% of our community pretty vocally and actively engaged in this. I would say we probably heard from the better part of well over 50% of our community all told. That is really impressive. I hope it didn't cause everybody quite as much heartburn as I know it caused me and some other folks, but at least we made it through it. And I want to thank everybody again for largely being thoughtful in their comments. Don't fade into the background. A lot of you folks on the call right now know fine well that I've got your phone numbers and I'm going to call you personally. And you're going to have to listen to my half-hour diatribes. So look forward to continued engagement. The next step is having everybody working through the comprehensive plan in a thoughtful manner, in a constructive manner. A number of you folks have expressed to me and other council members your willingness to serve and spend some of your precious time, which I recognize is precious time, I do not say that lightly, in serving this community and being helpful. A number of you have really just great skill sets, exceptional skill sets that can help push this community forward. And as Wendy suggested, you know, the more ideas that we have, the more likely we are to come up with the right one. With that, I'll open it back up to the dais. Not hearing any additional comments. We have a motion. Or Sarah, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to emphasize the fact that we need to be really, really transparent. I hope everybody learned from this, that we need to make sure that our communications are very open and upfront and that all sides are providing accurate information and that everybody is understanding that we all live in this community and we're all part of, you know, we're all taxpayers too. And it matters to all of us. And so I don't think that there was any nefarious intent by anybody on any of these things. And I think some of that got, you know, there was some distrust that was injected into this whole process. And I hope we can get past that and understand that I don't think anybody was trying to sneak anything by or do anything that was not in the best interest of the community. And I would hope that we can get past that feeling and everybody work together to keep rolling what a great place to be, so.
Agreed completely, Sarah. Thank you very much. Yes, Amy.
I have a comment kind of to echo on what Sarah's saying a little bit about this issue that having served on the council over a lot of different years, that there have been some issues that come up in our community where there is like near unanimous support among the council and among neighbors very quickly. One that I can think of is our community has been pretty unanimous in not wanting a double-decker along the entire eastern side of our city on MOPAC, right? That one, that was not hard to convince our neighbors to support. But there are other things that come up where we're going to have differing opinions. And I think it's up to us to decide what type of community we want to live in and who we want to be as a neighbor when those types of disagreements come up. And when we disagree about how we want to use our shared spaces and how we want to use our tax dollars. And I think that that's what this issue has been, is one of those issues where I've heard reasonable people have differing opinions. And so I just want to say thank you again to everyone on the council for spending time to do the work session, to be able to talk through why reasonable, why a reasonable council would have evaluated this property, why we would continue looking at other properties besides the one that the city hall is currently on, why we started a comprehensive plan. And I really appreciate that for the most part, the conversations among neighbors have been wanting to understand and wanting to be educated and wanting to be a part of the solution. And I hope that that continues to be the resounding direction that we had, especially with the comprehensive plan, that in the places where we disagree that we would, we would have charity with one another in our words and seek to find compromise. And sometimes we can't. The council doesn't always vote unanimously on things. And we continue to find ways to work together and be good neighbors to each other.
Thank you, Amy. I'd encourage us to, to, to take action on the motion on the table that said if there are a bunch of hands raised, counsel, I'm not opposed to allowing them to say their piece. My guess is a lot of those hands go down after this motion. With, with that, Amber, do we have anybody rushing to the podium?
We do have one hand raised from Jim Hill.
Let's go, Jim. We've got three minutes, please. You've got your hand raised. Make sure your mic icon is turned from orange to blue.
You need to unmute yourself, Jim.
Okay, it was giving me a little grief, but I'm sorry. You're going to head and make a motion, so I think I'm going to, can I reserve my time for, after you make your motion? Mayor?
Sorry to interrupt you, Jim. There's actually a motion on the table now. Gavin Massengill motioned to terminate, for the city to terminate the contract for the purchase of 503 Vale. And it was seconded by Sarah Hudson. You heard just recently discussion on the dais from the council members.
Did I rant quick with the dog? And so I missed a little bit. I missed it.
No problem. Glad you made it back. Would you like to reserve your time?
Yeah, I'd like to reserve it and see what's going to happen here.
You got it. Thank you, Jim. Amber, anybody else have their hand raised?
No.
All right. With that, then I'll call the vote. If there's no further discussion, counsel. Okay. Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley? Did I phrase? There we go. Sorry, Wendy.
Am I unmuted?
Aye. Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
All right. We have unanimous vote from council to terminate the purchase contract at 503 Vale. In closing, I'd just like to say two things there. Again, I want to thank, well, thank the council and the community, but specifically, I want to, I want to also say thank you very much to the Kellers. That was a very generous offer that they made to the city for no benefit for themselves. As a matter of fact, it would have incurred a monetary loss for them on that piece of property. Regardless as to whether or not you thought it was a good idea, I would encourage folks to recognize that one of your neighbors stepped up in a significant way to make an offer, a very generous offer to the benefit of our community, a potential benefit to our community. Secondly, we heard a lot of hope, comments on hope, that people are going to stay engaged. I'm not kidding, guys. Hope doesn't get it done. Hope is fantastic. Hope, whatever. We'll hope in November. Right now, I expect a little bit of action and for folks to stay engaged. Thanks for your engagement now. And with that, we can move on to item five, which is public hearing, discussion, or it's still open, I suppose, and possible action on a request to amend the zoning classification of the property commonly known as 503 Vale from residential to governmental and institutional. I will allow council to take up action and discussion. If you prefer, I can open up the public hearing portion.
I'd prefer to make a motion if we could, or if I would be recognized.
I've recognized Massengill. Go for it.
I move to not amend the zoning classification for the property known as 503 Vale Street from residential to governmental and institutional.
Second.
We have a motion from Gavin and a second from Sarah. Do we have discussion, counsel?
If we're not going to buy it, we don't need to rezone it.
That's a fair assessment. I actually don't know the process for us to be, to be able to do that anyway. With that, any other discussion, counsel? Amber, do we have anybody rushing to the podium with their hands raised?
Jim Hill has his hand raised.
Okay. Welcome back, Jim.
Okay, so this is, I'm probably going to come off your Christmas card list for this, Mayor Dyson, but
perfectly fine, Jim. I don't know that you were on it.
And I think, obviously, I'm very pleased with the vote because I was opposed to the purchase and the rezon. But you mentioned that it was a very generous offer by Mr. Keller. And I was looking at the contract. And if you look into the special provisions, there's a very nice tax incentive for Mr. Keller. Let's say this thing, hypothetically, this thing would be praised for three or four million. We could have bought it for a million, too. He could have taken that difference and had a nice tax write-off that's in the contract under special provisions. I'm not trying to
No, and that's, there's nothing wrong with that at all. I think it's a valid point. And I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I'm just appreciative that that the Kellers are prompt in payment of their taxes.
I think we all are.
Yeah. Well, I don't know that all of us are prompt on paying the taxes, but we're certainly appreciative of our friends and neighbors who do pay their taxes monthly.
Yes, right. Let me talk over you. But I just wanted to address your point that it was not, you made it kind of like this selfless act, right? It's, you know, when you take a million dollar or two million dollar, even if you've got the kind of money Mr. Keller has, and you can write off your taxes, that's kind of nice, you know?
Well, that's, that's, you think the value is three or four million dollars. I mean, I don't know where you're coming up with that, but I don't know if this is an interactive discussion right now, but
That's just me being, I'm going to hush up. That's, that's, that's okay, guys.
Just, we just terminated it. And you're going to crucify the Kellers here on a public hearing because they're going to get some sort of tax benefit when they've been nothing but great people to the community. the community? I mean, that's a-
No, 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 you're misunderstanding. I'm just saying, I'm saying-
Not misunderstanding you.
I think, I was just, I was just saying that, that Mayor Dyson made it sound like he'd done this tremendously selfless act, and I just wanted to point out that the way the contract is written, it's not a totally selfless act, that's all. Not that he's a bad guy, he's probably a really neat guy and-
Hey, Jim, you know, when I take, when I take stuff over to Goodwill, Goodwill gives me a tax receipt as well. Should I not claim that on my taxes?
Uh-
Or for the food bank, or for any number of other uh, charitable donations?
I see a pair of jeans-
I don't mean to, I don't mean to uh, have this all-
Has it been three minutes? I think it's been three minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I think it's kind of turning out of a cereal, and I didn't mean that to happen that way. I just wanted to throw that out there that there was money involved. Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, well, we appreciate your time, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Vote.
Melissa Morrow has her hand up.
Okay, Melissa.
Melissa, you can unmute yourself. You're unmuted, Melissa. Now you're muted again. Unmuted now.
Your icon should turn from orange to blue. Blue means you're live.
And Melissa, I don't know if this is a problem you're having um, currently, but I know that when you try to join from a phone or um, tablet without the app and try to use the browser, people have issues being able to unmute themselves and be heard. So if you don't have the app, um, and that's what you're using to watch the, the, the meeting and to join in, that might be an issue.
Tell you what, um, I would invite Melissa to uh, maybe email the, the comments in, and uh, we will have public comments available uh, in August's meeting, and uh, perhaps we can get the mic figured out. Ashley, I know Melissa had um, difficulties last time. Maybe if we reach out to her uh, ahead of uh, the August meeting, uh, we can help uh, walk her through, uh, maybe there's a setting with her, her mic on her phone or her computer or something.
It, it looks like she just left the meeting and then just rejoined.
Come back. Yeah, that's happened a couple of times. So I'm wondering if there's a connectivity issue uh, for Melissa.
And also, Melissa, if you just want to call in on the phone to give your comments, um, we can call you up by the last four digits of your phone number, and then you don't have to use a computer or the application. You can just call.
We can go ahead and vote while she's trying to figure out her technical difficulties, since we have a bunch of other items.
Yeah, um, I'd like, if there's no other discussions from uh, council, I'd like to go ahead and call the vote. Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
Great. Um, so uh, for the members of the public and uh, the press, uh, please be aware that uh, the city has just voted to terminate the contract on 503 Vale, and council has uh, voted not to rezone uh, 503 Vale uh, from residential to governmental and institutional. Uh, with that, uh, we have a presentation, um, item six, uh, presentation discussion, possible action on an Eagle Scout project by Andrews. Uh, forgive me, Andrew, uh, if I butcher your last name, is it Zucca? Um, first and foremost, thanks, uh, nothing easy about Eagle Scout, and I appreciate the fact that you're bringing uh, your project uh, to our city and to the benefit of our community. Uh, with that, um, I'll open it up um, for uh, for your presentation. Amber, is, is, is Andrew with us?
He's with us. I sent you as a panelist, Andrew. It looks like you're unmuted. Um, you might be having the same issues as Melissa. If you, if you join from the browser on your phone or on your tablet, it seems like that's blocking uh, people's microphones. So it's best to download the IP video talk app and access the platform that way. Um, hold on, let's see. It looks like he joined again. We'll give it one more shot, Andrew. Okay, Andrew, unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. Hello, council members and mayor. Uh, my name is Andrew Zucca, and um, I live in the neighborhood and am the, a frequent visitor to the Rollingwood Park. As um, I work towards my Eagle Scout, I am part of the Boy Scout troop thirty-one based out of Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church. Um, I'm trying to find my Eagle Scout project for my Eagle rank, which is the highest honor that a Boy Scout can get. Um, I'm an incoming sophomore at Westlake High School. Uh, I strive for the best grades in all of my classes. As well as being studious, I am active on Westlake sports teams. Uh, I am, I participate in the varsity swim team and the ultimate frisbee team. Outside of school, I enjoy being part of the church choir at my local parish, St. John Newman Catholic Church. Uh, during the summer, normally I would volunteer to help coach the Rollingwood Waves Summer League Swim Team as my way to give to the next generation of swimmers, but due to COVID, I was not able to uh, co, help coach this year. Um, so today I will be trying to get a project for a gaga ball pit approved for the Rollingwood Park. Uh, for those of you who may not know what gaga ball is, gaga ball is played in a large fence and area, usually octagon, oh, an octagon or a hexagon, and it's called a gaga pit. Uh, the pit is generally consisting of flat walls atop a smooth dirt, turf, sand, or rubberized surface as the base. Uh, gaga, the gaga ball itself can vary in size from a dodgeball to a kickball. It just depends on the ball that you have at hand. The game begins when a player or a referee, if it's a tournament, throws the gaga ball into the air. During this time, players will have to be touching the wall, and all the players will shout "ga" on each of the first two bounces, and then on last bounce, they'll shout "ball". After the three bounces, uh, the ball is in play and players may leave the wall and hit the ball at each other in the pit. A player who is hit by the ball is eliminated and must leave the game and wait till the next game begins, if it's recreational. I don't know how a tournament would work. I would think that it would be the same. And then a player may not hit the ball twice in a row, and any player who causes the ball to leave the pit will be out and have to exit the game. So for the specs on my gaga ball, on the project that I am proposing is that the walls will be thirty inches tall, so two and a half feet. Each wall will be eight feet long, and it will be made out of three two-by-tens to give you that thirty inches of height. Uh, the walls will be secured from a, with brackets from a company that makes the brackets pre-drilled for the thirty inches of wall, and they are going to be uh, metal, so it will be very sturdy. Uh, the brackets will be secured by a two-by-six that runs the length of the wall on the bottom of the two-by-tens to add more stability to the wall. Uh, I plan to level the area in the gaga pit and lay down a fabric that will keep grass from possibly growing into the pit as time progresses. The, I'm planning to fill the pit with four inches of a granite sand. Uh, granite sand is very compactable, and it will allow the pit to be set on a level ground, and it's also not like rocks or other materials that could possibly hurt if a player chooses to play barefoot. The location that I'm proposing right now is just a bunch of dirt, and there's no real use for it. There's not much that grows there. From what I've been told, there's no irrigation that runs through this section. I have added a picture to the proposal. Um, and the pros to this area is that it allows the parents to socialize with other parents and also keep watch of their children, as it is right next to a pavilion. It is next to the playground, allowing, once again, for families to watch over the children that may be in different age groups. Uh, and it is a completely shaded area, so that would allow people to play a lot longer throughout the day, as in Texas, it gets pretty hot. And so now comes the fun part, the costs. So I have estimated these costs. Um, so for the lumber and the ground tarp, I estimated about four hundred and eighty dollars. The price could change depending on the length of wood that we have decided to go with. And then the hardware, which includes the corner brackets, the nuts and bolts, and the wall covers from the independent retailer, cost, would cost approximately eight hundred twenty dollars. And then the pit interior, which I had proposed granite sand, will cost about a hundred forty dollars, including delivery. So in total costs, uh, we're looking at about a thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Any questions or things I can clarify for you all today?
Uh, Andrew, I want to, again, thank you very much for taking the time to bring this to us, and, and uh, thanks for considering uh, our community for uh, your uh, your Eagle Scout project. Congratulations on, on making that, uh, that far. Uh, you beat me by a couple of badges. Good on you. Um, and uh, uh, one question, um, have you consulted uh, with the park commission?
Yes, sir, I have. They were actually the first group of people that I went to and presented, and they have helped me refine my presentation and the location, and have helped me walk through this process to where I am today, presenting to you all.
Great, thank you. Um, council, uh, do you have uh, questions for, for Andrew today? Uh, Amy, go for it.
Sure. Actually, mine isn't for Andrew, but maybe just, maybe Amber will know, or maybe a Carrie's online shall know. So I'm looking at the proposed location, and it, it looks like it actually falls within the area that's um, zoned GI and not park. Is that right?
Um, I think they're actually looking at a new location. Um, you know, in the park where um, because you're walking into the park and it's on the left-hand side where nothing really grows under those trees. I think they're looking at over there instead. Um, but you're right, it would, would have been, because I believe the park property actually starts at the pavilion or, or right in front of the pavilion.
Yeah, the only reason I'm bringing it up is having recently looked at our zoning for GI and park more closely. Um, and the discussion that we've had about impervious cover being something that's on those areas, uh, the proposed sand would count by my reading as a seventy-five percent um, of impervious cover uh, substance. And so I just want to make sure that where, wherever it's placed, that um, either we can, if we move forward with rebuilding um, or renovating city hall in the future, that it's something that we might need to relocate in the future, depending on how that impacts our impervious cover percentages. Um, and also just that we've kind of acknowledged that right now it would be going in GI, but we might need to look at putting it in park later, if it is some, if we need those, um, if we need that percentage back for being able to do things with city hall.
It, it's right um, next to the pavilion, like between the pavilion and the fence that goes down the bluff. So it seems like the pavilion is not part of the GI zoning, right? That's part of the park?
It starts right at a sidewalk is the pavilion. So I think the portion, the portion that's in the picture, in my understanding of our zoning, is in the GI area and not in the park area. We technically all think of that as being the park, because it's a big grassy field for the most part, except for the very well-identified park that has no grass, and I think would make a great location for one of these. Um, and would be a lot of fun. I've seen a lot of kids at different camps that we've gone to playing in them, and they always have a lot of fun. So I think it's a great location. But I just want to mention that if we needed that space later because of impervious cover issues, that it might be something that we would need to relocate.
I was gonna say, that, that location has no grass right now.
Right. It doesn't, the fact that it's in GI and not in park, though, and that we might need all of our-
Right, right. Yeah.
Um, just to clarify, by looking at the picture, I can't tell, is, is the location between the pavilion and the park play equipment, or between the pavilion and the city hall?
It's actually, appears to be the portion between the pavilion, and that's the black fencing that separates the park from, from Nixon, Nixon Drive.
So it's between- and the play gate? And looking at- Or is it looking at-
So, so if I was, if I was looking at that, that angle, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the water fountains are just over to the side, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is it not? Okay. Uh, say, uh, so over to the right side, right, beyond that, that tree that's in the, in the foreground there?
So, so if you look, if you're at the pavilion and you're to look where the trash can is, where that trash can is, is all, is that trash can the playground or the field on the way to the-
So if you, if you continued, if you continued across those two paths, out to the right, past the trash can, you'd head to the play gate. So if you took the smaller path, uh, without the brick inlay, that would take you to the park bench. There's a little bench in front of one of the play gates. And then if you took the portion, uh, the, the left fork, if you will, that would take you uh, to the larger play gate and the water fountain. Is that a correct understanding of the layout?
I must be mixed up, because it looks to me like that would be park zone, but I might be mixed up on-
I think it's right on- But I could be wrong, too. That's why I asked. I, I, I looked at it, and I, there's like a weird right there that's-
I think, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a valid, it's a valid point to make sure that it's, uh, what we're talking about is, is specifically is uh, GI or park. And uh, what I would, might propose then is that uh, if council is inclined to approve this, uh, I presume that this is uh, comes with a blessing, not just discussion from park commission, but it's, and assuming that's the case, uh, if I could be so bold as, as to encourage the council to uh, consider approving this contingent on two things. Uh, first, determining whether this is park or GI, uh, and if it's in fact GI, uh- Uh, and if it's in fact GI, uh, making sure that it is uh, confirmed with the contingency that it may need to be moved uh, at a later date, um, if the city needs the additional space and square footage uh, for uh, impervious coverage.
I I just wanted to point out that it's not a lot of square footage. Right, it's it's um, it's like twenty feet across. And so that's that's not a significant square footage of impervious cover.
Yeah, I I'll be honest with you, I don't remember my uh, my geometry well enough to tell you um, what is a an octagon at at eight foot uh, per wall by if I'm reading this properly. Um, what is, I mean, do you just add those up to maybe forty?
Now, if you just, if you just assumed it was a circle with a twenty-foot diameter, that's like three hundred and forty square feet.
Okay. Man, I'm glad we've added two.
Fourteen square feet, so it's not a lot.
Thank you. Um, so uh, with that consideration, I think this is a very thoughtful uh, discussion. And I also really appreciate the fact that uh, Andrew brought this project here. Um, and even followed correct process, bringing it in front of park commission first and uh, and then uh, to council uh, upon their recommendation. Um, with that, uh, council, do you have any uh, other thoughts or or questions? Uh, or could I encourage you to consider action? Go for it Gavin, yes, sir.
Just a quick question uh, on clarity for Andrew. So when we're talking about the cost being for one thousand four thirty-five, that would be for us for us to pay for, correct?
No, sir. See, the goal of an Eagle project is leadership and fundraising. And so I will be trying to fundraise the whole portion of it. And that would include asking friends and family to help with my project, but also going to the companies where I am to get the stuff from and seeing if they'll give me a discount. So the whole goal is for me to fundraise the whole what percent, the whole cost?
Gotcha. Okay, well, you had me before, but uh, it's even 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 easier now, so. I was I was happy to to do a budget amendment for you, so. Good deal. Thank you for bringing it to us.
My pleasure.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I would also just um, assuming that we approve this, um, just ask Andrew to notify the city when the project, when you're trying to schedule the project for the installation. Um, because I know that, first of all, the city will need to know when people are going to be out there, but also because that enables the rest of us to know when it's happening. I know that you can always use extra hands on an Eagle Scout project, so you you can get more uh, more participants if we're notified ahead of time when you're going to be out there.
Yes, ma'am, I will do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Yes, ma'am, Amy.
Um, my only other suggestion is to work with the parks commission on coming up with promoting some days where there's uh, maybe like a tournament or instruction where kids could come and learn how to play it. And that seems like the kind of programming that um, the parks commission has talked about wanting to do in the past and so maybe even just getting the Boy Scouts out to do that would help encourage other kids in the neighborhood to participate and know how to play.
Yes, ma'am, I will definitely take that into consideration and that seems like a thing that me and the Boy Scouts or even just my friends would love to do and help have allow more kids to have more fun.
Well, I tell you what, in in that note, Andrew, don't don't be shy to letting uh, the city know. We'll be happy to to help get the word out and uh, um, hopefully have the best possible turnout for uh, for it for a tournament. Uh, love a good community builder at the end of the day.
Yes, sir.
Great. Uh, council, um, heard a lot of good discussion and I think this is is a really great idea. Um, sounds like a lot of you uh, agree. Um, do we have uh, an inclination to take action?
I'll make a motion. I uh, move, I move approval of Andrew Zucca's Eagle Scout project of construction for a gaga ball pit in the park um, next to the pavilion.
We have a motion?
Um, I'll second it, uh, but meant um, to just make sure that we look at the impervious cover and if possible, find a place. Uh, I mean, not impervious cover, but the issue of impervious cover in the GI zone and find a place that we can have it permanently installed where it won't interfere with our impervious cover uh, for our municipal building. I think there's there's just scooting it over if I think it's park where where it's proposed, but I might be mixed up, but that would be my friendly amendment.
Sarah, do you accept the uh, friendly amendment?
I'm not sure where we would scoot it over. There there's uh, there's not really a place to scoot it over there because there's trees and then there's sidewalk.
Can I offer it uh, a an amendment that is uh, maybe more along the lines of a contingency? Uh, uh, Wendy, if if maybe uh, approved contingent upon um, uh, I guess uh, ensuring that this is in fact park uh, designated property rather than GI. I'm fairly certain.
On it, and then if it's not uh, park, then it would, if it's contingent, then they couldn't move forward with the property if it was GI. So I didn't want to hold it up. I just want us to have the option with maybe some staff discretion to find a location that's zone park in that area where it can be placed permanently. And I think that is park, but like I said, I'm not.
Yeah, I'm I'm fairly certain it is as well.
I just think that should be evaluated because we don't want to have to turn around and move it. It can be installed somewhere permanently, then we should make sure it's in that location because we are looking at impervious cover issues with our um, possible renovation of City Hall.
I'll tell you what, if you guys, if you guys bear with me, um, I am pulling up a map now. Um, that provides uh, parcel information and I will I will dig into this in just one second. All right. I can say with near certainty, looking at this map, that this is parkland. And it'll, it will immediately, depending on the actual dimensions as built, uh, will probably abut uh, the um, the city GI tract. Um, probably with a couple of feet to spare would be at at a minimum would be my guess. So that that helps dissuade any uh, any any concerns.
I think it's parkland, too, just looking at where it is.
Yep.
So I don't think it's going to be an issue, but I think it's a fair point to.
I I agree. Um, with that, and and because we do have a fairly robust agenda still ahead of us. Um, can we get some clarification on the motion? The motion is approved is to approve uh, the project as presented. Um, Wendy, you offered a friendly amendment. Um, are you revising that friendly amendment or uh, withdrawing it?
Um, what was the friendly amendment that we just make sure it's in parkland?
Yeah, that's how I took it. Um, well, how about how about if you felt compelled, how about you restate it just for clarity's sake so that actually uh, uh, we avoid any confusion?
A friendly amendment just to ensure that it's located on parkland entirely.
Sarah, how does that sound to you?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, uh, if there's no dis- uh, other discussion, council. Okay, in that case, I'll call for the vote. Uh, Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
And I don't have Gavin on the screen. Uh, is Gavin still with him?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Bye, great, thanks Gavin. Um, with that, uh, a unanimous approval uh, for uh, this project. Again, Andrew, I want to thank you very much for your time and and considering uh, our community for the source of your Eagle Scout project. Um, congrats again and uh, good luck uh, on these last final steps.
Thank you, sir.
Good job, Andrew.
All right, um, I tell you what, we're gonna pull up uh, item seven, which is uh, the June um, RLWD financial analysis, uh, so our budget review for the third quarter. Um, Abel, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, yes, sir, the uh, budget review for June thirtieth represents seventy-five percent of the fiscal year. Uh, some of the items that uh, want to bring to your attention are the uh, our property taxes, we've collected ninety-eight percent of our estimated revenue. City sales taxes, which uh, may be of concern because of the current economic conditions. Uh, nonetheless, we're at eighty-two percent of our estimated revenue. The uh, sales taxes we received uh, last week were up a little bit from the previous uh, month. So hopefully that trend will continue. Our water sales are at eighty-nine percent of our estimated revenue, so water sales are doing fairly well. However, wastewater revenues are not, they're only at sixty-five percent of our estimated revenue. Uh, the general fund overall revenues at eighty-six percent, but you have to consider that uh, a lot of that consists of property taxes that for the most part that we've collected. Uh, but expenditures are only at fifty-nine percent, so uh, our expenditures uh, are basically uh, we're not spending the money uh, uh, like we probably would have on the under the budget. Water fund overall likes it for revenues at uh, eighty-eight percent of our estimated revenue and expenditures also only at fifty-nine percent. Uh, the wastewater fund, though, they're both revenue and expenditures are below our est- estimates for the year, uh, revenues at sixty-five percent and expenditures at sixty-three percent. So we're kind of on the break even point with wastewater rev- uh, the wastewater fund. Uh, those are some of the uh, points I'd like to bring to the attention of city council. Uh, any questions?
Looks good. Thank you, Abel.
Yeah, appreciate it, Amy.
Thank you, Abel. It's nice to see that our sales tax hung in there through uh, this crisis.
Correct, yep.
Give it, give a big thumbs up uh, to uh, Trader Joe's. Great, great, great addition to our community and um, not only they uh, they they seeing us uh, through uh, during this, um, they've just been all-around great partners to have in our community uh, since they arrived. Amy, yes, ma'am?
Um, Abel, are we normally this far behind on the telecom taxes this time of year?
Uh, the uh, telecom taxes, it's like hit and miss kind of a deal. Uh, they're supposed to pay us on a quarterly basis, but they're usually like two, three months behind. And it's hard to gauge when they're gonna pay us. Uh, we have about, I'm guessing, uh, six or seven companies that pay us telecom taxes. And they all pay us at different times. And sometimes they pay us all at once, sometimes it's spread out over two, three months. So it's really difficult to gauge if we're ahead or we're below on telecom taxes. But uh, at the end of the year, usually though, uh, they're fairly consistent in terms of our estimated revenue versus the actual payments received. It's just a timing that sometimes it's not there.
Yeah, I was just, the reason I was asking is I was looking at the comptroller's statement on what get, like how we collect those taxes. And it made me wonder if we're gonna have a lower collection because we don't have as many people in the office buildings making phone calls. And it looks at, we can, we can talk about it some more be- before the next meeting, but um, I'm wondering if we might need to anticipate lower collections based on the rec- like what the way that the uh, comptroller is saying that we get that money.
It's possible, but the dollar amounts of that received uh, the last, on the last payments didn't vary that much from the previous payments in terms of dollars. So uh, it's, but like you're saying, it's possible that maybe we haven't seen the full impact of the stay-at-home uh, situation that most companies may be in as far as the uses of the the telephones and so forth.
Yeah.
And like I say, I'll I'll keep an eye on it and uh, I'll keep you apprised on the next payments, set of payments that come in to see if they're up or down.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll be, and we'll be spending some time on on these revenues and kind of digging into them over the next thirty days, too.
Don't go too far, Abel. You're up, you're up again. Uh, sorry. Yep, uh, item eight, the quarterly investment report.
Okay, the um, on the third quarter, uh, most of our, well, all of our uh, investments are with the text pool. And for about the last four, possibly five weeks, our yield has been around twenty-one, twenty-two basis points. Uh, the previous uh, months who had been uh, anywhere between forty-five basis points, maybe thirty or so. Our interest income for the month of June uh, was roughly about twenty-five percent uh, of April. So that kind of indicates or is reflective of the uh, the uh, yield that we have. But let's say uh, the last four or five weeks, the US stabilized around twenty-one, twenty-two percent, uh, basis points, I'm sorry, uh, on our investments with a text pool. Uh, other than that, that's that's about all I can point out. And I guess that's more or less what the market is uh, is indicating as far as yields are concerned.
Great, thank you, Abel.
Uh, yeah.
Council, do we have any uh, comments or questions for Abel? Not hearing any. Abel, uh, thanks for joining us this evening. I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Yes, sir.
Best to your family. Um, with that, we will uh, pull up the consent agenda.
Move to pass the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from uh, Gavin and a second from Wendy. Uh, and Amy, I saw your hand, you're very polite. Um, uh, I'll go ahead and call the vote, Sarah Hudson. Sarah, you might be muted.
Sorry, aye.
Great, uh, Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
Gavin Massigil?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes unanimously, thank council. Uh, we've covered item thirteen of the regular agenda, so we'll move on to item fourteen. Uh, discussion and possible action on a task order to perform an engineering study on Riley Road and Vance Lane. And sorry, bear with me for one second. And, sorry, bear with me for one second. I'm missing Machichi. Would you please? Thank you.
And so, we, the city's been requested to install a speed cushion and flexible delineators near the intersection of Riley and Vance. In order to install traffic control devices on a highway, according to the uniform control manual, you're supposed to have a engineer, look at the data before you install it. And so, we originally, I approached the city with the request from citizens. They, the citizens have written a letter requesting a stop sign in the location. And I didn't think that we needed to have an engineer look at it in order to install a single, a speed hump one on each side across the road. But Amber was able to look into it a little bit more. And we feel like it should have a level of study done and just to make sure that we have evaluated it properly. And so the scope of work here is for K-Freeze to have a work order done to look at it under that scope. And, and then make a recommendation. And that's so it's not actually for the, the speed hump itself, which when I initially put it in, the speed hump is $2,500. And the delineators on both sides are $200. So this is a little bit more. But we do have $18,000 currently in our, in our street budget for traffic infrastructure. So we do have it in the budget for this year. And I know that there are some of the residents who are on the phone to talk about this as well.
I think the mayor just, he said his wifi just went out. I'll go ahead and call on, there are two people who have their hands raised. Heather, you were unmuted and can unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks so much. So, yeah, I've contacted the Rollingwood Police Department and the city council over, I'd say, the duration of the past four years. There's been a, an influx of people kind of cutting through off of Stratford onto our road. And without any real stop coming off of Stratford, they just continually speed. And it's, it's now just become a real problem. We have small children right along our house and then across the street. And, you know, God forbid, somebody makes a foul move and goes out to get a ball or something like that. Because people just don't really stop. And I'll even be outside with my kids with no regard, people just fly by. It's not even just, I thought it was contractors or construction people, but it's, it's just, it seems like residents really don't care either. If you're not living in that part of the neighborhood, it just seems like people don't really care. And there's also an influx of people coming off the rowing dock on the weekend that have been drinking or on drugs. It seems like, because I've told them to slow down, they've stopped and they look blitzed out of their mind. Not to pass judgment, but this is just, you know, I'm just calling a spade a spade. This is, this is not right. So I've contacted the police department over and over. And, and my neighbor as well, Leslie Reese has as well. And we're just really, something has to be done to make this a more suitable and safe place for our kids to play and for us to have our homes.
Okay, thanks Heather. We also have a hand raised from Parker. Parker, you can unmute yourself.
There's still.
Parker, you have to.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can't.
Great, great. Council members, thank you for, for the time to speak. So I'm at 100 Riley Road, I'm across the street from Heather and Bart Fowler. So Heather indicated this is a critical question just due to the safety of kids and, and, you know, there are other people that are using pedestrians on the road. And, you know, I'll be brief, but I am a, so I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Texas and traffic is definitely not my area of practice. But as far as the appropriateness of an engineering study, the entrance to Rollingwood on Riley from Stratford is kind of by far of all the entrances into the neighborhood, kind of the least protected from a speed standpoint. It's an exceptionally wide road. People from Stratford are coming from places they've been drinking or just driving fast on Stratford. And there's really nothing to slow them down until they get to a stop sign several hundred yards down the street. And so I think that it's a, an engineering study would definitely reveal the appropriateness of a speed cushion in that spot. That's, and I think it would, you know, be the best thing for the safety of people on the street. Thank you.
Thanks, Parker.
Thank you.
Sarah, did you have your hand?
Sorry, guys. I also, I understand the engineers here to, just in case there are any questions. Is that correct?
Correct. Ryan Bell with K-Freeze is a panelist currently. So if you have any questions, he's available.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and make an order. And I move to approve a task order to perform an engineering study on Riley Road and Vance Lane.
Second.
We have a motion from Wendy and a second from Gavin. Discussion, council? Go ahead, Sarah.
So, make sure I'm not muted. My only issue is this, if we are asking for an engineering study, I don't think we should be asking for an engineering study for a particular type of traffic calming device. If, if we're asking for their professional assessment, I think we should just ask for them to evaluate what would be most appropriate. Instead of specifying what we think we want, because I'm also a professional engineer in Texas, but traffic is not my primary thing either. And I would not presume to dictate what type of calming device we should put in. Because we'd also talked in the past about a valley gutter there because we have some drainage issues. And a valley gutter would do the same sort of thing by having a dip as opposed to a, you know, a cushion going up, you have something going down, still serves to slow people down, but it also would transport water. Because putting a speed cushion in there is liable to cause problems with the drainage that we already have right in that same area. So I just, I don't like the idea of specifying what we want them to evaluate. I think we should just ask them to evaluate traffic calming options.
It's actually a good comment. And until Sarah just mentioned that, I forgot, yeah, we did look at ballot. We seriously considered a valley gutter there to, to kill two birds and one stone. So that's a good point.
I think the hang up on that was we were trying to get the IIP and prioritize our improvements to that area. And now that's done, so we do have some liquidity in our funds to be able to do some infrastructure improvements. So if that's something that the, the council wants to look at, as opposed to putting a speed hump, that, I don't know if it would have the same effectiveness or not. Honestly, it's not a traffic control device per se. But if you talk to Tom Farrell on Park Hill, he'll let you know that he thinks it is. So, you know.
And I'm not suggesting that we, I'm not suggesting that we change course, but I think Sarah makes a good point. I've just let it, leave it open to engineers to, to look at all the options.
Yeah.
We encourage the engineers to also take a look. Because K-Freeze obviously performed the IIP. So they're going to have a really good understanding, ideally in-house of that area as well.
Well, we do.
Follow back up, and we can follow back up with the neighbors, too. I mean, if, you know, maybe K-Freeze comes back with two or three options. I mean, it doesn't preclude us from getting back with, with the residents and
Yeah.
Talking about.
Yeah, and they are concerned about the drainage there.
Right, yeah, I think it pawns in front of, is it pawns in front of Fowler's?
Yeah, under their driveway.
Yeah.
Looking at the scope of work that's on the task order or attachment, it seems like, and maybe we have the engineer here who, so he could tell us. But on the scope of work, there's, there's four sections. And the first one is project coordination. The second one is study technical memorandum. And I'm reading the descriptions and it seems like both of those could be done independent of the actual solution, because it's the study part to determine whether there's data to support a solution going in. And so I wonder if we can have one and two, and then have them come back with those results and then decide on three and four, or if that is going to significantly change the cost of the service.
Yeah, it's not itemized, is it? Is it? Yes, it is.
Is it?
Yeah, and the last page, it's itemized.
There it is, okay. So we would, I mean, if we had task one and task two, then before moving to task three, perhaps that's where we would have, because that's where they would give us the recommend, they would tell us whether speed cushions and vertical panels are warranted. And if they are, based on number one and two, then they would work on the plan set. So I wonder if we can get one and two done and then be able to say, the plan set should include multiple options, or perhaps they can come back and indicate if there's this particular type of plan that would be the most recommended. And then we move forward with the plan set based on that type.
Can I ask the engineer a question? Other than, if they're doing a traffic study like this, other than a speed hump, what other solutions might there be that would be recommended?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
There are, there are a menu of solutions. There's a, you know, what we're going to go by is, there is a traffic calming manual that was developed by, I think, the FHWA. Just speaking, the, the options get, speed cushions and channelization are among your cheaper options. They start getting more expensive from there. There's things like traffic circles and things like that, that's more of a street reconstruction. You know, we don't know yet if the data is going to necessarily point to a solution being necessary. But there are other options, but they do, they tend to get more expensive than speed cushions.
But channelization.
Channelization is the, the vertical, you know, that's how I interpreted it from the, from what was sent to me is narrowing of lanes. You know, using the, the vertical panels to narrow the lanes down. That's what I, that's what I was calling channelization.
Okay.
Sorry.
So not at the dip?
Not the dip, no. And, 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 you know, the, the speed, if there was a speed bump, it wouldn't necessarily need to be at the dip. If there was concerns about drainage, it could be, you know, anywhere along the strip, you know, along that segment of roadway.
Another thing that's been suggested in the past, and director of transportation for the city of Austin used to live in Rollingwood, on Rollingwood Drive. And one of his comments was the striping. So putting the, the side striping, not the bike lanes, but you know, those sides should, and a center line, we don't have a center line down Riley either. That helps.
Is it turns into city of Austin right there, that Page Road, right past the Fowler and Reese resident, it turns right into city of Austin. So our striping that we have only goes right up to there. And then we can't stripe up the stop sign. So I think that's a smart solution that would have, I know what you're saying with that, but this area is particularly tricky because of the intersecting lines.
All right, what are we going to do?
I like, I like Amy's suggestion to try and get one and two and then have them come up with options instead of including that upfront.
And that would take four weeks, because week one is the kickoff, one week from notice to proceed. And then number two is the speed study and the draft technical memorandum, which is three weeks from kickoff. So that would be four weeks. And then the number three is the review meeting with the city, one week from the submittal of draft technical menu. So wouldn't we want one, two, and three?
I would say the schedule items don't necessarily correlate to the scope items. Those were just.
The schedule.
What I would suggest is if we do one and two, then have a meeting where we, if, if the, if the technical memorandum can summarize the results and also indicate then which types of dampening would be recommended, that we receive that and then decide. If there's multiple options, then we would have the option as a council to maybe have public input and decide which one we move forward on the plan set with, so that we only do a plan set with one of those options. If we're trying to save money.
Yeah, we can do that.
The other option is to, and I'm not sure, sure how the homeowners feel about it, but I know that the Fowler's are really interested in putting that better in for the drainage solution. And maybe pursuing that and seeing how that works and then having that drainage issue taken care of. And then we can go back for an engineering study if we need more support there. Like, that's not what this agenda item before us today, but it is, it is something we could bring back, it's worth considering. At moving forward with the traffic study, I think would be helpful in general because we haven't had one in 20 years.
Perhaps with the technical memorandum, when they come back, we can just have the, the briefing that shows also what drainage solutions are contemplated for that area. So that we can see the drainage solution with the different dampening options if they're recommended. And then make some decisions about what type of plan set to move forward with. Does that, does that work with K-Freeze to include that information in your report?
Yeah, I, I don't. Yeah, we can, we can talk about, I think, I think that's, that'll be fine, yes.
I think it's just a recognition that we have drainage solutions that we have now in a IIP that are in that area. And we're looking at dampening. And we want to make sure that whatever money we spend right there, that we're optimizing it.
Right, right.
So I would admit in my motion to approve a task order for task order item number one and two to perform an engineering study on Riley Road and its lane.
I resecond that.
We have a motion from Wendy and a second from Gavin. Additional discussion, council? Call vote then. Sarah Hudson? Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you and look forward to working with you guys again. Kay Fries.
Thank you.
Also, thanks to Reese's and Fowler's for making sure that this brought to our attention. And thanks Wendy for getting it on the agenda. Fifteen, discussion of possible action on an agreement between City of Rollingwood and Travis County for dispatch services for the fiscal year 2020 and 2021. We've, we've discussed this to some degree. I'd invite Chief Brady back if he's still here.
I'm here.
Hey, Chief, you want to? Yes, sir. You want to provide a little bit of background for council on this?
Sure. So of the agencies that are not, I guess, owners of the CTEC facility, we're basically customers and with the current budget woes everyone's experiencing, their thought process is to recuperate 100% of what they believe their operating costs are that are incurred by providing services to agencies like ourselves and the other agencies that utilize their services. Initially, they had come out with a much larger amount of money that we're going to request this current budget year or coming budget year. They're recommending, they blocked into a 15% increase, which would be the the amount that you see in the budget, the draft budget we have.
Thank you, Chief. Council, so you see the agreement in front of us. I think the chief has done an excellent job working through this, all things considered. Especially considered where we're starting or what the county offered to start. Thank you, Chief, very much for your diligence on this. Counsel, are you inclined to take action on the agreement in front of you? I'm sorry, Chief, maybe I should ask you one question before we get started. Do you have a recommendation one way or another? Are you recommending that council approve the agreement as presented?
Yes, sir. I mean, we're really without any option at this point.
Okay, and I know it's less than ideal, but again, I commend you for the for the efforts that you put in to get us to where we are now.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Rollingwood and Travis County for dispatch services for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021.
Second.
We have a motion from Amy and a second from Sarah. Discussion, council? Call the vote then. Sarah?
I've got a question.
All right, go ahead. Sorry, sorry. Go ahead, Gavin.
And I won't take long, but can can the mayor or maybe Amber help me understand? Do we receive anything from the county in terms of, or any other council member too? Like, what exactly do we get from the county on annual basis for the tax, for the tax dollars we pay in county taxes if we're going to be charged fees for everything else and considered customers? I don't really consider myself a customer.
That's a great, it's a great point, Gavin. And, you know, I don't mean to disparage the the county sheriff's department. They're, they're fine folks and good officers. That said, you know, it wasn't so long ago that we were, you know, around half staff, maybe even less than half staff. We couldn't provide for 24/7 coverage of our policing coverage for our community. And our requests to the county for support there were actually greeted with a bill.
Are you kidding me?
And additional charges rather than actual coverage and support during that time. I probably don't need to tell anybody on this dais that if we weren't a city and we were just county, we would actually receive those services free of additional charges based on the taxes that that we as property owners pay. That's, I think, probably the most disappointing aspect that at the same time while we are being
You froze up on us, Mayor. And I was really digging what you were selling too.
This is such a good question, Gavin, though, because, you know, I I have thought the same thing and asked the same question just on many different services that that you can get in the ETJ, but you can't get, we can't, we pay for.
Yeah, it's ridiculous. They treat us like we're not residents of the county. And I think it's bullshit. So that's where I am.
Well said.
Well, we lost the mayor. Where were we? We were
I think you were voting.
Frozen in time, too.
You're seconded. You commented. Oh, we were about to vote, yeah.
Well, I will invoke Mayor Protemnis and continue with the vote. How's that?
Do we have any options for further discussion or is this?
No, I, no, I'm just being a horse's butt, but I don't think we have an option, but I, I don't like it.
I do appreciate the chief whittling this down, though, to where it is because it wasn't good of a deal at the beginning, so.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. Yeah.
Me too. And I think maybe this is an area where continuing to talk with Travis County Commissioners over the next year before we have to take this up again to look at why they're treating us like a customer rather than a resident of Travis County is a worthy conversation.
For those of you, I'll leave that to those of you who who might be better spoken with them. But I agree that that's a noble cause.
I I think that you could do that as well.
I'm not sure it would go very well. All right. Mayor's not back, so I'll continue the vote. Councilwoman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Patillo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hundley?
Aye.
Councilman Shapiro?
Aye.
When I vote aye also. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 16. Amber, do you want to, it's a discussion of possible action on an interlevel agreement with Travis County for the purposes of CARES Act funding. Amber, do you want to tell us about that?
Yes, so I think I've been keeping you updated in my city administrators' reports. But Travis County was one of the 12 largest counties. They received CARES Act funding directly from the feds. And the idea was to distribute the the money as as quickly as possible. Well, unfortunately, and then let me clarify this, Austin and the larger cities received direct funding. But if you weren't in a large county and you weren't a large city, then the state was going to distribute those funds. And the state managed to get those funds out very quickly. Travis County did not. They, we went back and forth with them. They are being more restrictive than the state in sharing those funds with us. They have made it, this agreement is non-negotiable according to Travis County. We get 20% upfront and we have to provide robust documentation as to what we're using this this money for. In total, we are eligible for $86,735. And so once again, Travis County has really left us with no choice. The, in our local agreement is, it's far more restrictive than what the state has implemented with their other communities and areas, but that's where we're at.
Thanks, Amber.
I would point out that Travis County used the population of Rollingwood to receive their, as part of their calculation to receive their direct funding. So they're happy to, so they're happy to treat us as residents when it benefits their direct allocation from the feds. But they're not, not so interested in treating us as residents when we have a shortage on our, on our police department and we need assistance from them.
Exactly right.
Reference, reference my earlier statement.
Yeah, that's, that's fair. I'll tell you what else, Gavin, is the architect of of our, our current budget. They threw you one more curve ball by only providing 20% upfront and then making the balance of of the $86,000 and change that Amber referenced accessible perhaps on approval of receipts. I don't need to tell you what kind of difficulties that causes us as a city going through a budgeting session. Now, these are comments that were brought up. One good thing came out of this. I've had, and we as the City of Rollingwood have had a lot of support from some of the local and surrounding small cities as well. I'd argue we fought a pretty decent fight, unfortunately. As you probably also know, the county largely ties our hands. So I think they designated to us around $55 per person for our 1,577 citizens after receiving roughly $175 per person for our 1,577 citizens directly from the US Treasury. So quite the disparity. Fingers are crossed that the county will come around and use those funds in a very meaningful way. Although I understand that the biggest challenge they have right now, and disappointingly so, is contact tracing, which I think there's basically unanimous support in knowing that that is a critical element for what we're dealing with. And by the county's own judgments, we are grossly behind as a county, especially in comparison to the rest of the state.
Have they, have they made any commitment that they want, that they will keep the remaining 80%? So if they're only making 20% available, and I'm, I mean, that is similar, a similar concept to the state. But have they committed, as the state has, to actually keep, keep the remaining dollars in reserve for the future? Or do they plan, if we don't use it, are they just going to spend it? Because COVID is not going away anytime soon. And so just because we don't have the receipts and have, don't have the expenditure today does not mean that we won't have the expenditure in three or four months from now. And so what commitment have they made that they will at least keep that other 80% on reserve for some period of time?
There is no guarantee from the county that those funds will be earmarked for use specifically for City of Rollingwood, whether it be for residents, city support, or our businesses.
Because my concern is that they, they, they go spend, you know, if we haven't submitted our documentation, you know, in the next 30 days or so, they're going to go spend all the money. And then if if we do have additional COVID expenses in the next three or four months. And I don't know if they're under the same, I assume they're under the same provisions of the CARES Act as the state is because those dollars have to be out by December, the end of December. And so if they're under the same guidelines as that, you know, I would at least like to make sure that we have the ability to go back with our receipts for a portion of the rest of that 80%, 80%.
Before December.
Knowing that they haven't gotten nervous as the clock ticks away as they get into December and they, they get all the money out the door thinking that we're not going to come back and claim any of our 80%.
Sure. Well, Gavin, I'm not entirely sure how to address it. Safe to say that the county's explanation to me and to other mayors in the county was simply, we're not going to give it to you, to you being the individual city, because we're not sure that you're not going to spend it all before this, this pandemic has run its course. So how, how we're going to feed back the same argument back to them and or at least have them play by the same rules that they're suggesting we play by, I'm not sure. And Amber put it, put it correctly. This was sent over to us as as a non-negotiable point, which is unfortunate. But again, in keeping with how the county has largely handled this conversation out of the gate. The fact that, in truth, they don't, they don't, they don't care for our input is kind of the message that I've been taking away. And if I've gotten the wrong message, I apologize and would hope that the county would give me a buzz to clarify.
Well, feeling's mutual, so. Anyway, there's nothing to do about it.
Well, the question in front of us today is, is we can continue to fight what I think you, you have made a very valid, exceptionally valid points. Or we can take as the county suggested, the interlocal in front of us as is.
Yeah, I mean, we're in the same boat with this as we are the dispatch agreement. It's taken or leaving, so.
Well, at some point, I will, I'll hope that we would have better small city representation in, at the county level. It's my sincere hope that we have a couple of voices in the not-too-distant future that really understand some of the struggles that especially a city like ours has, despite the fact that we are a small city with a relatively small budget. We're juxtaposed to the better part of a million people, 927,000 of which border us on Austin. And then the balance sitting over in Westlake Hills. So as a small city, we have big city problems. And how the rationale works out that the City of Austin personally and as a, as an entity, needed that $175 per person. But the City of Rollingwood couldn't justify the same, given its proximity and the fact that, quite simply, that a virus does not care about our arbitrary city lines is beyond me.
That said, I can only assume that Commissioner Doherty fought a valiant fight for us and Westlake and Lakeway. And so I can only assume that that happened. And for that, I thank him. And I hope that he continues to remember all of the thousands of people in these small cities in Travis County as we move forward.
I believe it's about 133,000 small city.
That's a lot of people.
Sure is. A lot of people that got a short end of a, of an otherwise pretty robust stick.
Yep.
With that, council, we have this in front of us. It's not as straightforward as this agreement might otherwise suggest that it is. If you've picked up on it on that If you've picked up on it, Tom, that maybe I have a little bit of a bitter taste on how Rollingwood, uh, was dealt a, um, a garbage hand, uh, you'd be correct. Uh, but I would also say that we're not alone. Uh, there are 21 other cities in, um, Travis County that were dealt the same hand.
Um, the question is
Yes, go ahead, Amy.
So we got the note that this is non-negotiable. And I know that there's been a lot of work on it. Is, is there a, I don't recall now, is there a deadline for us to accept it?
Uh, I believe that deadline was moved a couple of times and forgive me, I don't have it sitting in front of me.
Yeah, I think there was a deadline, um, but I don't know that they can hold it since we didn't meet the deadline. We were very clear that we needed to bring these agreements to the council.
We have their actual approval.
Right, um, they
On their agenda as well, so we're not the only small city that is just now considering it.
Right.
As, as, as I mentioned before, they've moved the deadline at least once or twice. I'd have to go back and review the, uh, emails, uh, that Julie Wheeler, uh, has sent out to, um, uh, recall the most recent iteration. And I'll be honest with you guys, you know, uh, $14,000 I think is, is what, uh, is the only amount that we are guaranteed. Um, and that is the prepayment that we also have to provide, a, a level of accounting for. At $14,000, uh, that is amazingly significant money for a small city like ourself. That said, and it's, it's a drop in the bucket, uh, for these guys. So I can't imagine, um, they would incur the wrath of the media, um, if, uh, we did approve today and they suggested we missed a deadline.
Okay. I, I move, uh, I move to approve the extremely arbitrary and one-sided inter-local agreement with Travis County for the purposes of the CARES Act funding.
Second.
A motion from Gavin and a second from Sarah. Do we have additional discussion, counsel? I'll call for the vote. I'll start, go ahead, Amy.
My only additional comment would be that, uh, you know, I, I know that we're signing this and effectively it locks us into a particular position. But, uh, to Gavin's point, I would hope that we would see advocacy by our county commissioners, especially the precinct three commissioner, to be looking at what is happening with those dollars and any additional ways that, um, they could be distributed in a more equitable way that where it would reflect that we are residents of Travis County as well as the people who live in the city of Austin are residents of Travis County.
You're here.
So, sorry to hold up the vote, but
No, you're, it's, it's a, it's a great point. Um, with that, uh, if there's no other discussion, I'll, uh, call for the vote. And, and just to your point, Amy, I have no doubt that, uh, um, Ann Howard, should she succeed in November, will lend a grit ear, uh, to Rollingwood. Uh, I have every faith that that would be the case. Sorry Buck, were you raising your hand?
No, I didn't mean to, just scratching my hands.
Just get, making sure it still worked, right on? In that case, I will, uh, we'll go back to calling the vote. Um, Sarah Hudson.
Aye.
Amy Patillo.
Aye.
Wendy Hundley.
Aye.
Ashley, oh, sorry, not Ashley. Yeah, sorry, I'm just, um, reading names on a screen. Gavin Massengill.
Uh, Ashley can vote for him if you want.
I was gonna say. Uh, Gavin Massengill.
Aye.
Buck Shapiro.
Aye.
Counsel, I appreciate, uh, time. This, uh, we will, uh, begrudgingly accept unanimously the, uh, the inter-local agreement presented by the council, or Travis County. Let's move on to item 17, discussion and possible action on the submission of a name of a qualified person to serve on the TML Board of Trustees, Region 10. Um, you know, there's a, there's a bit to discuss here. Uh, I, I think Amy Patillo, um, has a wonderful grasp, uh, and can provide some comments, I think, as to why it's very important for a community like ours, uh, to put forward, um, a, uh, a strong candidate. Amy, you wanna, uh, give us a little bit of background?
On this item? I, it's not my item.
Oh, you're, you're kidding. Wendy.
I can see it up. For TML, uh, it has to be an elected or appointed official or, uh, an employee of the city. So are any of our employees of the city interested in, uh, holding this position?
For context, uh, Ashley or Amber would be, uh, you guys would both be excellent, uh, candidates, strong candidates. Uh, you know, small cities well, uh, not just, uh, from the sense of Rollingwood, but having experience, uh, with, uh, Liberty Hill and, um, Ashley, it's Live Oak if, if memory serves.
Leon Valley, but close.
Leon Valley. All right, sorry Live Oak and sorry Leon Valley. You're both fantastic and you both missed out on a fantastic city secretary.
And just to be clear, counsel, you don't have to nominate anybody if you don't want to or, you know, um, but we thought we would give you the option to do that.
Well, it sounded like Mike was asking for volunteers.
Hey, did you pick up on that?
I did, and I haven't heard anybody volunteer.
Well, it's, uh, it's not
I will say that, it, I, I do think it's a good thing for us to continue as a city to look at opportunities for people from our city. Um, the council members and staff to be appointed to different boards, especially TML. Uh, so whoever puts this on the agenda, I am glad it's here. And I will speak to the importance of trying to find ways to have more seats at the table. And so, um, if there is someone who would like to volunteer, I would be glad to support that effort in whatever way I can.
I, I mean, Gavin, Sarah and Buck, I didn't mean to, to leave you guys out at all. I'm, I'm staring, I'm staring at a screen full of very competent people, um, and I, and I think
I still have a little fence mending to do with my good friends at TML, so I don't think anyone that I think that, but I, I do think, I do think it's important to, uh, have a small city vo- voice at TML. Um, especially going, uh, going into next session and, uh, and I think some, some of the fights that we've, or not necessarily fights, but some of the issues that we had discussed, I think, um, are pertinent to issues that will be on the TML agenda for next session. Um, some of the sales tax issues and chapter 380 agreements and that sort of thing. I, I think having specifically some of the issues that we have, um, discussed at, at council, would be a good, would be a good voice at the table for TML going into the next session. So I, I'm fully supportive of it being on the agenda and us nominating someone, but I'm probably not that person.
Well, uh, I, I, I do really like the idea of a staff member, um, being there. I think, uh, it would be good, uh, not only for our city, but I think for individually, uh, and career-wise, uh, for Ashley and Amber to have that kind of exposure. If, if it's something that, uh, is interesting, uh, to either one of you, I know you'd both be excellent and my guess is probably heads and shoulders above, uh, most of the other applicants. Um, that said, if counsel, uh, doesn't mind sharing, uh, some of our, um, some of our professionals, uh, with, with a greater good, I suppose.
Does staff feel like Yeah, does staff feel like they have time?
You wanna do it? Oh, I think she said she wanted to do it.
I'd be happy to, yeah.
All right, I love it. Done. We're, you know, you know, Ashley, we're all just sitting here waiting for you to say that. It's all, you could have saved this 10 minutes by just Right on.
What's, admit, yeah. You can add on to your plate.
Don't, don't come back to us and tell us you're too busy. Not, not true. I mean, it's true, it's true. I just don't know how much of a sympathetic ear you're gonna get because you volunteered. Ashley, with that, uh, in all seriousness, uh, I think you're an excellent candidate, um, and, and thank you, thank you very much for volunteering, uh, to do this. Um, uh, counsel, um, what do you think? Are you willing to take action to support Ashley, uh, um, in this regard?
Uh, I would move to submit Ashley Wayman as a person qualified to serve on the TML Board of Trustees, Region 10.
Great.
Second.
We have a motion from Amy and a second from Wendy. Do we have additional discussion, counsel? Not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. Uh, Sarah Hudson. Oh, sorry, uh, I'll come back to you, Sarah.
I'm still here.
Wendy Hundley. I got you during dinner. Wendy Hundley. Aye. Amy Patillo.
Aye.
Sarah Hudson.
Aye.
Gavin Massengill.
Aye.
Buck Shapiro.
Aye.
Good. Ashley, outstanding. Um, fingers crossed. Uh, obviously, uh, motion carries. Um, good luck, uh, Board of Trustees, uh, saying no to what is unquestionably a top candidate. Discussion, item 18, discussion and possible action on communication policy for the City of Rollingwood and to authorize the city attorney to review and make revisions to the city policy for final adoption. Uh, guys, we've had this in front of us, uh, a handful of times and most recently this has been brought up again, um, as a result of, uh, a, a large level of community interaction. We've even heard it discussed, uh, tonight, uh, that maybe we, we can, uh, do a more effective job of communicating with the public. I will tell you that, uh, I am of a mind that, uh, we can, we can always do better. Uh, that said, we do an excellent job as a city. Uh, our city staff does an excellent job. Uh, we have, uh, implemented a number of, of changes to accessibility of our information. Uh, with her transparency you mentioned earlier, uh, at the end of the day, I am a big believer that we do, uh, a lot of things very, very well. Um, we clearly go far above and beyond, uh, what is statutorily required, uh, of a public entity, uh, let alone a city like ours, uh, to provide. Um, and in truth, uh, I, I think, again, while we can do better, a bigger problem now that we have, uh, with our communication is the fact that when we put information out, uh, we cannot necessarily get our proverbial horse to drink the water. And, um, that said, um, you know, I, I think Wendy has put a tremendous amount of time and thought into, uh, a, a communications plan. Uh, she's brought it back in, in front of us again this evening. Uh, and with that, I'll let Wendy, uh, if you're inclined, to give us a little bit of background on how we can improve on what I think is already, uh, a really good, uh, system that, uh, actually, in, in truth, you, you were largely, uh, should be largely credited with, um, getting us to where we are today.
Oh, I think the staff is the, the staff members who have implemented everything are the ones who deserve the credit. Um, so, but I, I appreciate the counsel, uh, that we have worked for, uh, budgeting for and, um, making available more transparent communication to, uh, the city. We have live stream meetings now. We have the availa- availability of having our, uh, meetings, uh, pulled up and reviewed. Um, they're archived there. We have all of our agendas available. So we've come a long way. Um, the communication policy, uh, the idea behind it is just to have some guidelines, um, for staff so that there is, um, there, there is a framework around what they can work on, uh, to get communication out to the public. Um, we have worked and refined the policy a little bit, uh, in, in a work session before this meeting and the final draft of that is not in the packet. I'm sorry, it's, um, it's my fault. I didn't get all of the revisions done and back to, um, Amber and Ashley, um, beforehand. Um, but there are some revisions that we worked on making together. Um, what we think is the, the communication, uh, that is already required by law, um, is very robust in, in what, um, we are required to do in order to allow the public to participate and have meaningful, um, participation and comment on, um, on issues before the city council. So this, this is not meant to make, um, that more restrictive on the council, the, the guiding, um, or on the staff. The guiding principle behind our notification will always be what's required by law. We'll always make sure that we fulfill that. Um, but this is, um, these are different communication methods that we have, that we can use to help, um, get the message out in different ways. And so, um, basically it's just going over all of the different communication methods we have and making a policy, um, for emergency and non-emergency use in our systems. And, um, what we wanna do here is provide flexibility for the staff to be able to use the system and not make it work against them. So, um, one of the things that we're gonna do is attach an addendum to the back, uh, that will allow the city administrator to update what, uh, groups and, and systems that she establishes, for their current use. And, and, uh, the items in this policy are not items that must be used, but they're ideas and guidelines for what can be used, if that makes sense. Um, so, that being said, I think we, we will continue to, um, improve on our communication and, um, we've built followers on, on Facebook and, um, we use Nextdoor. We use different communication, uh, uh, methods. So, um, these guidelines are just meant to help, um, staff to be able to work through how these different channels might be used. Um, the agenda item does have a review by, um, our legal team. I think this needs to go through another review. Um, when, when it was first reviewed, it was reviewed by Doug. And then we got our new attorneys on board and so we, we paused and said, let's have our new attorneys review this, uh, before we move forward. And, and I think it was just them, we were doing a lot of other things at the same time. Um, but I do wanna make sure that we have current legal review on this for, for all of the, um, policies that are in there surrounding computer use, that are actually in our policy now that are adopted. And then also just eyes on anything, um, that's in there that, um, we, we just wanna make sure we're in compliance with the law and with the First Amendment and, um, those are all really important issues. And it was drafted by somebody who's not an attorney. So, um, I would make a motion to, uh, take action on the communication policy for the City of Rollingwood to authorize the city attorney, under direction of the city administrator, to review and make revisions to the policy for final adoption.
Second.
We have a motion from Wendy and a second from Amy. Uh, counsel, uh, discussion?
Do we have any idea from Charlie, um, how long it will take them? Like if we might see a draft back to consider in August or if it will take longer than that?
I haven't seen it, but I can't imagine it would take me. I can't imagine it wouldn't be done before your next meeting.
Great.
I thought you were gonna give us specific hours, uh, there for a second, Charlie, and I was gonna, oof.
I haven't, I haven't seen, I haven't seen it, but, uh, I'll make sure it gets done before your next meeting.
Well, I was just going to double check against your next invoice.
Well, that's why I don't guess it though.
And part of the review, there, there were sections of the communication policy that I took right out of the Personnel Manual. And so, if this needs to be combined with the Personnel Manual, or if that needs to be taken out and just held there, then I'm okay with that. There's no pride of ownership in this document for me. So, I just want it to get changed in a way that makes it work, so.
Wendy, I want to commend you. This is, this really is a thoughtful body of work. Appreciate you taking the lead and, more importantly, sticking with this over all this time to make sure that this is still an option and a viable option for us to continue improving our communication. And in no short order, does this also provide a level of clarity for our staff, which also helps protect our staff from misunderstandings from our community members, which I think is probably pretty helpful in, in some instances. Look forward to having this back from Charlie. Counsel, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? I'm not hearing any. Call for the vote, Sarah Hudson.
Aye.
Wendy Hundley.
Aye.
Gavin Massengill.
Aye.
Buck Shapiro.
Aye.
We're, Amy Patillo.
Aye.
All right, unanimous support. Charlie, look at, look forward to having your comments back for our, our next meeting. We'll move on to 19. Discussion on possible action to initiate a review by Planning and Zoning Commission of amendments to residential tree canopy maintenance ordinance. What we have in front of us again is another thoughtful body of work presented by Amy Patillo this time. Amy, would you like to give us a little bit of background on the edits, new suggestions, as best presented this evening?
Sure. So, with our tree canopy ordinance, since we passed it, there have been several different comments that we've received. One of those being that Planning and Zoning had a whole agenda item and asked me to come in and talk about the tree ordinance and talk through some different issues. And so, one of the things that has been brought up by Planning and Zoning, different members of Planning and Zoning, and also then just, I've got, I've had questions in the community as well, is kind of the way that the tree ordinance plays with, or the canopy ordinance, ordinance plays with, interchanges with our oak wilt ordinance, and also the reality that we have residents who spend time and money trying to save trees. And so, we don't want to necessarily have an ordinance that would detract from people hiring arborists early to try to save trees because they're just afraid that they're going to have to replace the tree anyway. And so, rather than try to spend money trying to save the tree, they would just let it die and then have to replace it. And then also, just kind of the reality of the costs that are associated with oak wilt and not wanting to have an ordinance that would detract from people addressing oak wilt early. So, those were, those were some of the things that were brought up by Planning and Zoning and have also been brought up in conversations I've had in the community. So, I, I just, you know, one of the things that we said when we passed the tree ordinance is that we would continue to get community feedback, and we would, we would take, you know, from time to time, we would look at whether there needed to be revisions. So, I put together an initial draft here that focuses on just making some adjustments to section numbering after the recodification happened. Also, I think it might be good practice, and I did it here, just to suggest, as we're going through code, to think about timing requirements that we have in our code, and where we have the option of affecting those timing requirements. If there's things that we maybe have learned during the pandemic that would impact how we set deadlines. So, I, I looked at that. And then the third was considering waivers to replacement tree requirements for protected trees that are subject to removal under the oak wilt abatement, and also where documented efforts have been made to try to save a tree. So, those were, those were some things that I spent time on. My suggestion was going to be that if we would like for Planning and Zoning to take up this issue, we could send some form of this proposal to Planning and Zoning to review. If there's additional issues, Carrie may have some administrative issues that she may want to ask to be reviewed that we could. We're in a season where perhaps that we would ask Planning and Zoning to take up looking at, looking at amendments to the tree ordinance. And they're going to have to hold public hearings and do that process. So, this was just to get that kicked off, and if we wanted you to give some direction to Planning and Zoning to start that.
So, Amy, how, how does the ordinance detract from, from being able to manage oak wilt? I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding that.
So, so because you would have to replace trees if they die, whether from oak wilt or other ways, what I, the comment that I have received is that there may be neighbors who are less inclined to address oak wilt early because they're concerned that they're just going to have to replace those trees anyway. And so, rather than, than taking the proactive effort to try to address the oak wilt early, that there may be reasons why someone wouldn't. I, honestly, I, I don't have, I, I've just heard this from several people. I don't have good evidence of it. The other one, I do think that Planning and Zoning addressed more directly, which was the idea that there are people who, like many of us, hire tree companies to come in. They assess that we have a tree that might need extra water, or they may try to do some treatments to try to save the tree, but that the tree is ultimately going to die at some point in time. And that if someone is doing the work to try to save a tree, and it still ultimately dies, that that seems different to me than the oak wilt issue. But those were the two issues that were brought up.
Okay.
So, we don't have to address the oak wilt one. I just, I, one of the things we said when we passed the ordinance is that we would look at issues as they came up.
That's, that's fine, I just, I just didn't understand it.
I know Mike had a comment. We, we talked at one point in time about the oak wilt part. You may be able to give a better example than I have.
Yeah. Well, I actually, I mean, I thought you did it pretty good. You summed it up, our conversation, pretty well. What had been relayed to me from a couple residents was a reluctance to remove diseased trees that they had attempted to, to save, largely because they were, and probably understandably, a little bit disgruntled by the fact that they had already spent money in an attempt to save the tree, and now we're going to be required to spend additional funds after getting approval to remove the tree they tried to save, and additional monies to replace the tree. You know, that, one person, whatever, two people, okay, maybe, you know, maybe there is something there. And, and once I started hearing it from, you know, three and four folks with concerns about removing their, their dead trees, or hesitancies to remove the dead trees or diseased trees, that prompted me to have the conversation with, with Amy. Again, guys, I don't know the right answer to it. I do know that as a counsel, we've, we've had that discussion, we've had this discussion before about whether or not we should have some considerations for removing diseased trees. And, and if so, you know, how do you go about that process? So, did, Amy, I hope that summarized our conversation well. I, I don't know that it necessarily advanced Gavin's question in a meaningful way, though.
Well, and I suppose the issue is we don't want people leaving diseased trees in their yard because of the fear of the cost of having to remove them and then re.
That's a huge one, right? Yeah. Disease trees.
Trees are susceptible to disease.
And not, not only that, the diseased trees themselves pose health and safety issues for passersby's, as well as the infrastructure. One of these trees falls into somebody's, somebody's home, or, or into our power lines, or, you know, something along those lines. It's just, how do we encourage? I guess a question would be, how do we encourage good stewardship? And my question would be, right now, I've heard it from a handful of folks that the, the rules we have on the books may be discouraging good stewardship. So, is there a way for us to offer a carrot rather than a stick in that scenario? But it would be kind of how I, analogy I would provide, I suppose.
Let's do it, I'm sold, let's go, let's, I'm, I'm all in.
All I got to do is talk you until you decide it's too late. There we go. So, with that, I do think Amy also presents it in the right, again, with the right process. Let's have Planning and Zoning, this is an ordinance that, that originated with Planning and Zoning. Let's have Planning and Zoning take up the considerations that some, some people in the public have brought up by holding public hearings and seeing if, if, you know, there, there's support there, or there's, there's, there's a minority voice that is creating a squeaky wheel, if you will. That's your invitation to, to consider some action, counsel.
So, I would move to, I'm not exactly sure, is it initiate to have Planning and Zoning review?
I would, yeah, maybe instruct Planning and Zoning.
Okay. Me. Pull it, aim. Agenda.
Maybe you can leave it broad, so if they see other issues, bring up.
Yeah, because I didn't, I didn't have, I had intended to ask Carrie to before I put this on the agenda to weigh in, and then I totally forgot. And so, I would like for her to indicate any other administrative things that might be helpful. So, I would move to direct Planning and Zoning to initiate a review of amendments to the residential tree canopy management ordinance. Give them the scoop.
Okay, I have a motion. Sorry, go ahead, Amy.
No, I would say that we could send them this unless there's other comments that council members have as well. And then also ask them to, to work with Carrie to consider any other amendments before they would consider public hearings and other action.
Nice and frozen? Oh, no.
I think I did freeze for a second, okay. Sorry. Do we have, we have a, yeah, there we go. Do we have a, we have a motion in a second? Okay, no more discussion, I'll call for the folk. Sarah Hudson.
Aye.
Wendy Hundley.
Aye.
Gavin Massengill.
Aye.
Buck Shapiro.
Aye.
Amy Patillo.
Aye.
Great, thank you. We will bring up, let's see, item?
Hey, Mike, I think we skipped item 12.
Did we? No, item 12 was on the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think there's an error in something in item 12.
Okay.
I moved to reconsider the consent agenda.
Can we just reconsider item 12?
I think we have to reconsider the agenda.
Reconsider the entire, and then we can pull it.
Yeah. I moved to reconsider the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a, a motion from Gavin, a second from Amy. Sarah?
Well, my, my question was the date.
All right, we get it, we get it. Sorry, Sarah, I'm calling for the vote on the reconsideration.
Oh, okay. Aye.
Aye. Wendy?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Okay. Now, with that, I'll call back up the consent agenda. Recommend somebody pull item 12.
I, I've moved to approve the consent agenda, removing item 12.
Second.
Second.
Sarah beat you. Okay, Sarah gets a second. Gavin, motion by Gavin, second from Sarah. Sarah, how do you vote?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
I keep getting you guys during dinner. Okay, consent agenda passes with the pulling item 12. We'll call up item 12, discussion of possible action on resolution, number 2020-07-15-12, providing at least one accessible voting system in each polling place used in Texas election, adopting the new equipment certified by the Office of the Texas Secretary of State. Sarah, you had a, a specific concern?
Well, a question, and, and maybe this isn't the way it's supposed to be. It just seems odd that we would be adopting something that requires us to have done something since last August, and we're just adopting it now. I don't know how we can approve something that we were supposed to have done retroactively. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, so this was a, we received a template from Travis County, the, the Elections Division. And this is basically, we had some questions about it too, and it's already been reviewed by legal. But it's, that is when those, those took effect. But basically, this agreement is saying that Travis County will be providing those for us because we are required to provide accessible voting equipment. And Charlie, do you have anything else to add to that, to my understanding?
Well, and Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like this is a shift in responsibility. Basically, Travis County is moving liability of them to provide the accessible equipment onto the cities. So, if we had, you know, they're making us adopt this resolution, then we are totally liable. So, that way, if, if they don't provide it, they're off the hook. Am I kind of understanding that correctly, Charlie?
I honestly don't know. I, I don't remember looking at this resolution, so.
I was going to say, this kind of seems like a. Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's a good point. When do they need it, when do they need it approved by?
I believe August people of the day. August 14th, they need to be executed by.
And that's before our next meeting, right? Yeah, because we're not meeting until the 26th.
What are they going to do this week?
Maintain responsibility?
Yeah, okay.
I don't know.
It was.
I don't know if they.
With that tomorrow. And she didn't, I did kind of ask her if it was, you know, about the shift of responsibility. And she seemed to think that it was just more of a procedural, something that everybody has to adopt who's having an election, and that Travis County was providing it. But, sorry, I got from that.
Yeah.
I don't know why liability here. They were reluctant to shift any liability for the CARES Act funds. We couldn't be trusted with, with that responsibility. Could we, can we really be entrusted with this level of, of care and duty with regards to something as important as a, as an election? Do we have that capability here?
Does say, prescription 123.00, you have the Election Code, the City of Rollingwood must formally approve the use of said equipment.
Right. So that's what I, that's, can everybody hear me? That's what I was looking up is, I, you know, I apologize. I, I really don't remember seeing this. I probably, I don't remember seeing it. But the statutes, we're going to use a particular voting machine. The statute, the statute says that before a voting system may be used in elections, the authority designated by this section by resolution order or other official action of the authority must adopt the system for use in the elections. So for, for our election, we can use. That's what this.
Oh, I see. It's about the certification of the system itself.
That's right. That's exactly what it is.
Yeah, okay. Well, man, I was getting ready to revolt. And then we go reading the statute.
Sorry, everybody.
Well, I guess we haven't had an election since last August 1st, so it doesn't mandate anything that we haven't already violated. It just seemed really odd that we would be adopting something in July that required us to have approved and accepted something almost a year ago.
Yeah.
Counsel, what do you think? Now that we have a little more background, I'm gonna throw it back on the consent agenda and call it a day?
That's okay with me. I just, it just seemed odd. And I wanted to make sure I was clear what it meant before we moved on.
I was with Sarah. I was ready, I was ready to go. I was ready to fight, to fight with you, Sarah.
Well, I, I'm gonna say thank you because of.
All right, get your start up.
It got, it got me, yeah, one more dig in for the CARES Act that really just.
Yeah. But it woke me up. I was falling asleep.
Well, let's, let's not fall asleep just yet. Tell you what, we've only got a couple more items. Let's go ahead and take some action on this one, if I can encourage you to do so, counsel. The motion.
I move to approve resolution number 2020-07-15-12, providing at least one accessible voting system in each polling place used in a Texas election and adopting new equipment certified by the Office of this Texas Secretary of State.
Second.
We have a motion from Wendy and a second from Sarah. Don't you wish we just kept it on the consent agenda? How long did that take us to read out?
No way.
Call the, call the vote. Sarah?
Hi.
Wendy?
Hi.
Gavin?
Hi.
Buck?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Okay, the motion carries. We will approve said voting systems. Item 20, discussion of possible action to set a public hearing on the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget on August 26, 20.
I move to set a public hearing on the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget on August 26, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion from Gavin, a second from Wendy. Discussion. Sarah Hudson?
Hi.
Wendy Hundley?
Hi.
Gavin Massengill?
Hi.
Buck Shapiro?
Hi.
Amy Patillo?
Hi.
All right. We'll see you guys on August 26. Item 21, discussion possible action to set a public hearing on proposed tax rate on August 26, 2020.
I move to set a public hearing on the proposal, proposal, proposed tax rate on August 26, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Wendy beat you. We've got a motion from Gavin, a second from Wendy. Discussion. Now, discussion, Sarah?
Hi.
Wendy?
Hi.
Gavin?
Hi.
Buck?
Hi.
Wendy?
Hi.
All right. Okay. Item 22, it's our agenda item regarding South MOPAC expansion. Amy or Wendy, do you have any updates?
I have one update. I watched most recent CTRMA board meeting. And so the project on South MOPAC that would have improved the, the ramps portion over by Barton Skyway, that would have lengthened the ramps, that has been put on hold now because there's not traffic necessitating the ramps. I suppose that it'll be put on hold until there's traffic again. So then it can be built while there's traffic.
Makes, that makes perfect sense. Sure. Why wouldn't they do it that way?
So the other thing that I thought was of note is that the 183 project is going out for bond in December. And based on what happens with that bond issuance, that will then kind of forecast what they can expect with going out for bond on the MOPAC project and may impact the trajectory of the MOPAC project. So as far as the timeline, I think we're still probably into 2021 before we start seeing designs on.
Can I ask you for a little verification on that, on that connection? If you suggested depending on how 183 goes, so goes South MOPAC? So if 183 is seen approvingly for bond, you think South MOPAC will be as well? Or if 183 goes forward, South MOPAC is likely to not in the immediate future?
I don't know that I can conclude that from the meeting. What I did conclude from the meeting is that there's a question about what will actually happen when they go out for bonding because the traffic on MOPAC has been so low during the pandemic that that will now impact what, what information is put in the congestion reports that then go into the 183 bonding. And there's all these different factors that are kind of at play with bond ratings and what rates might be available and what levels of congestion are going to be able to be forecast. And so it, it may be worth other people on the council going and listening to the discussion of their financial reports from the last meeting to see what else might be gleaned. But I, I, those are my two highlights.
Say what, if you wouldn't mind providing links to those meetings, just ready access, I'd, I'd love to go in and take a look, take a listen, have a listen. There we go.
There was, there was a pretty sense of very thoughtful conversation from, especially the Travis County appointees, asking questions about the budget and trying to understand some of the assumptions that were being made and some of the impact of the current lack of traffic on MOPAC on moving forward.
Yeah. Thank, thank you very much for the update. Counsel, any additional thoughts or questions? Not hearing any. Amy, thank you again for the update. We'll call up item 23, which is in regards to discussion possible action around B Cave Improvement Project that Tech Dot has committed to co-sponsoring with the City of Rollingwood. Amber, I'm correct in saying that we haven't heard anything from Tech Dot recently. Is that correct?
Correct.
Amy or Wendy, I know this has been on both of your radars for quite some time as well. Do you, do either of you have updates or any comments? Okay. I'd say a lot of this isn't too surprising, considering how everything slowed down during the pandemic. That said, we'll make sure we stay on top of it. Both items 22 and 23 are obviously critically important for the City of Rollingwood. That runs us all the way down to reports, guys. Just for anybody that's still joining us in public and of course for your own edification, the reports listed on the agenda are available to the public and we are happy to field questions, should anybody review and have any. If there's nothing else, counsel, before we go, I just want to say thanks again to all of you and to staff. It's been kind of a trying several months, really with some of these conversations that have happened in, in the public sphere. I know there's a lot going on in the world. That's weighing on a lot of us, myself included. I suspect strongly that a lot of the feedback, while good, some of the feedback was maybe a little heavy for some of us. I just want to thank again everybody for sticking with it. We've got a good community. We've got good people here. We've got phenomenal staff. I appreciate everyone that spends the time to make this a better place. Thanks again. It's not unnoticed and, and we'll. We'll get there. Guys, stay safe. Wear your masks. Wash your hands. Stay six feet apart. More importantly, be safe and let's try our best to be kind to each other. I was a bad example of that earlier. I regret being a little testy with some of the public comments. That said, then I'll do better. I'll ask that you guys do as well. Take care of yourselves. If I can get a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Great. All right. Sarah, adjourn.
Hi.
Wendy?
Hi.
Gavin?
Hi.
And Amy?
Hi.
We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Bye, y'all.
Bye, guys.
Bye. Thank you.